Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment regular meetings scheduled for April 28th, 2022. Hang on one second, sorry. As you may be able to tell, we had some technical issues getting started. So thank you for your patience. This meeting will be conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Bayer Open Public Meetings Act of 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. Governor Murphy issued executive orders 103 and 107 declaring a public health emergency. And so we are having this meeting accordingly. So so we'll have our accord called to order. And now staff, do we? Oh, and I'm sorry, we need to start with the pledge of allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United
of the United States of America and to the republic
for which it stands
which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty
and justice
justice for all. Okay, staff, do we have any sunshine announcements?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this hearing has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Tuesday, April 26, 2022. We have notices to be marked.
Okay, and this will be be one for tonight's hearing in evidence.
Very good. And staff, could we do a roll call now, please?
Yes, Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Yeah.
Commissioner Maney.
Here.
Commissioner Coyle.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Arujo.
Yeah.
And Acting Chair Donnelly.
Here. Very good. And the board very happily welcomes our newest commissioner, David Cruz, who was just sworn in. So welcome aboard, David.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're very lucky to have you. Very good.
Very happy to be these guys.
Excellent. Excellent. So now we'll swear in staff.
Okay, and if Lindsay and Francisco will raise their right hands, do you swear or affirm that the comments you will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. And then we'll proceed. Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence, but let me share my screen so I can show you the agenda.
Very good.
One second. Can everyone see?
Yes.
Uh. Yes, besides the adjournments in new business item number 12, case Z19050. The address is 137 through 155 York Street. They will be carrying with preservation of notice to the May 12 regular meeting. And also item number 16, case Z21-085. The address is 166 Hancock Ave. They also will be carried to the May 12 regular meeting with preservation of notice.
Very good. And to that that point, for those of the public that were here to participate in number one, the the hearing on the St. Peters Prep case, that that was the first adjournment announced. And again, that's May 12. So we have adjournments for both St. Peters and St. Paul's, the Hancock case. That's the conversion of the St. Paul, the Cross Convent. I expect that there might be some public participation for that. So that's the other case that is adjourned. Just so we're all clear and people know that we're not going to hear those cases tonight. Very good. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So then, without any further ado, I think we can proceed with tonight's agenda. You will just so so people know, for old business, these other cases are carried for 86 Bramhall Avenue. That's also carried to May 12. Let's see. 88 Highland Avenue also carried to May 12.
I can
Yeah. 271 Webster Avenue also carried and 90 Webster Avenue. Very good. Okay, so now we can proceed with tonight's agenda. First case is case Z22-00. This is an administrative amendment case. The applicant is Sherman Property LLC. The address is 184 Central Avenue. They are being represented by Thomas Lee. If you can promote their attorney so we can proceed.
Promoted Thomas Lee and Jeffrey Lewis.
And Thomas, I'm sorry, for some reason I mispronounce your name all the time. I'll get it right.
Don't worry about it. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Tom from Connell Foley. This is a notice case. I just want to make sure that counsel is in receipt of my affidavit.
Mr. Lee, yes, we have reviewed your notices, your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication. And Bridget, let's mark that A1 for this application.
In one moment. That is A1 in evidence.
Thank you, everyone. The application before the board this evening is an administrative amendment to a previously approved project. It was a pre-existing non-conforming three-story building with three units in it. We are not changing much to the building. What is really changing is the height of the existing stories, part of the basement and part of the height of the building. Because this was an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, this was jurisdictioned before the zoning board. We are changing the height by one foot, I believe. It does not expand beyond what is permitted in the R1. But this is nonetheless an R2 variance. I have Jeffrey Lewis here, who's going to quickly walk through what is a, in my eyes, a very basic administrative amendment.
Very good. And 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 Mr. Lewis, you actually, I'm sorry, yeah, have have Bridget swear he went first. Thanks.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And just state and spell your name for the record.
It's Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I S.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And for the record, my license is up to date and good standing in New Jersey.
Very good. And Mr. Lewis has appeared before our board many times. His license is up to date. You may proceed with your testimony. We accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I'm just going to bring up the drawings. As was mentioned, this is an existing three-story building and it has eight-foot ceiling heights. So all we're doing here to change the approved plans is we're going to dig down one foot at the ground floor, so that we can have nine-foot ceilings on the on the first floor. And then when we rip the roof off, which we have to do anyway, we're going to add one foot to the third-floor apartments. So right now I'm showing the existing first and second floor plans on the left and the proposed first and second floor plans on the right. All that's changing on the ground floor, we have to add a couple steps to get out in the backyard. And we're relocating the front door to the apartment to to the front area here with a landing and a step down. Those are the only two changes that are being made on the first and second floor. Looking at the third and the second, I'm sorry, the third floor and then the roof plan, there are zero changes being made. And then looking, this is the front elevation, the approved are at the top and what we're proposing are the bottom. The only change here, again, is a very minor change. We're only adding one foot to the top floor. So it's just a little extra space up in this area. And then looking at the side, again, we're one foot taller. And then the one minor change is this window becomes the door entry into the ground floor apartment. And that's all we're proposing here. And that's all I have to show you guys. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Lewis, my only question for you is with this addition of the one foot, we are not exceeding what would be the height limit in the R1. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
That's it. That's all I have. That's the only testimony before the board this evening.
Very good. Do we have any questions from the board for Mr. Lewis or the applicant?
I have two questions. Is the front gonna be a driveway? Because I know it has a curb cut in the front. Am I right?
Yeah, the part of the plan is getting rid of the curb cut, getting rid of the driveway and planting a new tree there in front.
And now you're gonna do a rooftop where people could come upstairs and, you know, do barbecues and all that stuff?
Yes, we do. We actually have a front and a back roof deck. So there are two roof decks on the building.
Because I think one of the concerns with the with the community on there, did they go to a community, you know, like with the community, talk to the like a block association? Because I think some of the neighbors were upset, talking about, you know, jumping from roof to roof and not not being sure of the next, the next door neighbors of how they could be right close to each other. And if there's gonna be a fence up, because they're going to go to their property.
So so just for some clarification, Commissioner Cruz, the only issues before us are the addition of one foot to the height and the additional side entrance. This application has already been approved by the board. This is just an administrative amendment. So there are only those two narrow issues before us. We are not going to rehear the whole application. So the 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 issue that that we kind of have to delve into if we choose to is, you know, whether or not those changes are appropriate and consistent. Because the rest of the application has been approved already. And that's not going to change.
Okay, got it.
So very good.
Thank you.
And any other further questions from the board? On this? All right, so we can we can open this up for public questions?
At this time, I see no hands raised. However, if you do have any comments or questions, please press the raised hand at the bottom of the screen. Or if you are on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself. Oh, you see a hand promoting Lisa.
Well, Lisa?
She was promoted.
She's muted for some reason. And she's not on video.
Okay, I don't know. Start video.
It should be next to the unmute button. There you go.
Okay, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the comments you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state and spell your full name and provide your address?
Yes, my name is Lisa Mephi, L I S A M E Ephesian Frank Ephesian Frank E. And I live at 188 Central Avenue.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Mephi. You can you may proceed. We ask that members of the public try to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. So thank you and proceed.
I only have a few issues. Where are the original homeowners here at 188 Central? We've been here for more than 50 years. We're all for promoting and improving our neighborhood because we want to stay here. We've raised our family here. I only have one concern about the rooftop garden. It's a shame that we weren't notified before. It was approved and received a letter to come on a Zoom call after it already has been approved. My concern is the noise. You're going to have people up there all hours of the evening, barbecuing, smoking. And our bedrooms are right there. You know, we have lived here and we want to be able to keep our windows open in the summer if we're not using our air conditioning. I don't want to have to worry about a fire, a flame, a spark coming or an ash coming from a barbecue grill or someone throwing a cigarette out, you know, off of it and, you know, setting my house on fire. Because now they're going to be able to be higher than us. So they'll have access to our roof, all of our roofs, because it is three, four homes together. And I'm a little concerned about that. I'm also concerned about now they're getting rid of the driveway and the garage. Where are we parking all of these cars? We have such limited parking to begin with. You know, the house has been vacant for more than it's, I believe it's more than two years. What's living in there? Like, am I going to have to deal with rats and mice in a home that's all connected? I mean, will you exterminate before you or set traps before you start start any type of construction? I mean, that's really just what my concerns are. I think it's great. I think it's going to look beautiful. But when owners don't live in their homes, we're at the mercy of who they rent to. And we've seen over the years, living here, people are in and out. They don't, you know, owners don't care. They collect a rent check every month and they don't care. But, you know, my mother-in-law is 80 years old. She's the original owner. She's raised her family. I'm sorry. You know, she's raised her family here and and now is going to have to deal with all this construction and all of this chaos. You know, for something that has already been approved, like we didn't have a have a say or you didn't, you weren't able to hear us before. We weren't allowed to speak before. And now it seems that it's too late. Doesn't matter. And that disappoints.
So Mr. Lee, do you think that you could address some of Ms. Mephi's comments? And in addition, can city staff, I'm assuming, Vinnie, that the the notice issue is on the on the the record? And are we able to basically determine whether or not, you know, a certified letter notice was sent to 188 Central? To the right owner?
We don't, I don't have those records in front of me now. This is a case, the the caption is Z19 dash 118. I mean, so this is something that's long gone.
Yes.
Whenever time for appeal of that case is is passed. So there's really nothing to do about that. In terms of Ms. Mephi's concerns about, first of all, I don't know what the status of the of the building is now, assuming for the moment it's vacant. Okay, so I assume before they do any construction, I know before we do construction anywhere, you need to go to the construction official. I'm sure that he's going to be requiring the the building to be baited. So there's, in case there are any rodents, they don't go throughout the neighborhood. I mean, that's always the first thing that the construction official tells you to do. That would answer that question. What happens up on the roof? I guess is another, it's not a construction official code comment, but I guess there's somebody you can call in City Hall if there's somebody up there making noise or anything of the like. But to to question the 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 roof deck now, it's long past. So I don't know how to answer that. Yeah, I without the file, I mean, I'm assuming that you had notice. But I can't prove that right now because the case is, according to that document, it's that's three years ago. So I don't know what's happened since.
And and Mr. Leagley, I am more than than happy to provide what I'm sure was the original affidavit. I don't think jurisdiction would have been found before the board. Have we not provided that prior to it? I was not the original attorney at the time. Mr. Harrington was. I know he's going to be before the board later this evening. I'm sure you're aware of our record here. We're always very good about noticing. What I would say to the the rooftop decks is, and I'll let Mr. Lewis go into it, they are intended to be personal decks. It is not a common rooftop. I'll let him show that they are not in large size. So they're not really intended to have 50, 60 people on them. They're really for personal use. But again, that's a portion of the application that was already approved by the board. And we're really just trying to make this more habitable units this evening by expanding the the size of the ceiling to roof.
Just to add to that, about the notices, so the the original case, Z19118 was approved in 2020 and we were operating virtually. So I was able to go onto the data portal and I did see that the owner at 188 Central Avenue was notified via mail.
Well, I can tell you that the owner of 188 is sitting right next to me. English is not her first language. So anything that would have come into our home comes through me. I could tell you that I did not receive any letter. The same way I jumped on this call when I received this certified letter, we would have done so then. So I I I didn't receive anything. I mean, I I don't, I don't know. And she's right here. Like I said, she she wouldn't even understand what the letter would say. It would either go to her son or to myself. And we would read it and and explain it to her. So she would understand. So
Understood. Our apologies. All I have to go off of is the certified mail receipts that they submitted and it has the address on it. But I'm sorry for the confusion that you didn't receive it.
Yeah, we did. No, and 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 if you have a certified mail receipt, that's that's acceptable evidence. It's the best evidence of service that 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 we have. So again, sorry for for the confusion, but that but but that issue has gone. I think the one relevant issue that might be helpful to free to provide you a little bit more information on is what Mr. Lee suggested and to have the architect just show briefly. Because again, we're not reopening the this issue, that the that the decks are for personal use. And they are just much smaller in scale. Maybe Mr. Lewis could just speak to that briefly.
Sure. And I'll, I can bring up the roof plan just to show it quickly. We are proposing, our goal was to provide some some private outdoor space for each apartment. So so what we did is the ground floor apartment would have their backyard. And then the 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 top floor apartment has the spiral staircase which goes to this front roof deck. And then the middle apartment would use the staircase and they would use the rear roof deck. So we did break that roof deck up into two smaller spaces and they're each private. So they're not like the whole building would go up there and have a party. It's someone's personal private roof deck space.
Good. Then, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Okay. So do we have any staff comments on this amendment?
I just have a question. So these apartments are rentals? They're not condos?
You know, that that's always very, very difficult to say in a moment. My my client does tend to go towards more condos. I have a feeling that's probably the way he's going to go here. But until until clients generally have their approvals in place and they're putting the work in, they 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 don't make a final decision on whether they're going to be rentals or condos. But I can tell you in the past, my client has leaned more towards condos.
Okay.
May I ask a question, Mr. Lewis? Is the rooftop enclosed? Or is it just gonna be just open?
Well, you'll have you'll have parapet walls that are about three and a half feet high, like a railing height around the entire roof. They have like a knee wall around the whole roof.
So it'll be about three feet high?
A little higher, yeah, a little higher than three feet.
Mr. Lewis, that's required by code, correct, for protection purposes?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Basically, to prevent the kind of, you know, people either falling off of them or jumping from place to place. It's really, they're just walls to to protect sound and protect people from going in and out.
Okay.
That's right.
I just have a quick, like, comment question, just to someone tell me if I'm wrong. We're not voting on the height of gate fence, whatever you call, guards on the roof right now. Like, I'm under the impression we're just doing the amendment on the height, right?
Of the
Got it. Okay. I just wanted to know. Okay, because I was getting confused for a second where this was going. Got it. Okay. Kathy just kind of froze. Kathy?
It looks like Commissioner Donnelly's screen is frozen.
Okay, um, let's hear from city staff.
Okay, there we go. Commissioner Donnelly, I can hear you, but you're frozen for me. Is it just me?
She's frozen.
Okay.
No, Kate is frozen.
Yeah.
Kate, can you hear us? Seems like it's going to be one of those nights.
Yeah.
Tanya, do you have Kate's number? Can you call her?
I have Kate's number.
Someone call her.
Hold on. See, that is she's fallen asleep. Hello? Could you tell Kate that her screen is frozen on the zoning board?
Am I still frozen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You are.
Might be worth it to maybe sign.
You muted yourself while you were speaking, Tanya?
Yeah.
I have a crying child. Sorry. It might be worth it to sign yourself out and sign back in. I don't know if that would help.
There you go. Are you on the crying child?
Yes. It's a meltdown hour at our house.
Mine was having a meltdown because I wouldn't give her a knife.
Well, how dare you?
How I worst mother of the year. How dare I?
Should we proceed without Commissioner Donnelly? It's just an amendment.
Yeah, I don't know if we nominated an acting vice chair. I wasn't hearing that earlier on.
I don't think we did.
We did not.
How about Commissioner Green? Oh, I see Kate now. Okay. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, staff has no comments. Staff recommends approval, just with the condition that the conditions from KZ19188 remain. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
And applicant accepts the those conditions.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we accept the vote and to accept the administrative amendment for case Z22003184 Central Avenue with with conditions.
There a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Great, okay.
Commissioner Patel?
Uh.
Commissioner Cruz?
Hi.
Commissioner Maney?
Yes.
Commissioner Rujo?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Donnelly?
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
I'd like to thank everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Good luck, um.
We're gonna go backward and hear the other amendment.
Okay.
For Palisade.
Okay, uh, so before us now will be, hang on one second. And what case number is that? Uh, is it Z twenty-one hundred? That one?
On my calendar, it's Z twenty-two dash zero one one. That's it, Lindsay?
Yes.
Wherever you are. It's a one-year extension, five eleven Palisade Avenue LLC.
Okay.
The address is five eleven Palisade Avenue and uh the attorney is Rita McKenna. There's Rita.
Sorry, can you see me?
No, but we can hear you.
I'm not sure why you cannot see me.
Modern technology, Rita. I have no idea.
All right, can we do this with, oh, hold on. Hold on, I'm getting another notice. There we go.
There you go.
There we go. I was gonna ask, can we do this without you seeing me? But, okay. Are we ready?
Very good.
Yes, we're ready.
Yes.
Okay.
You can proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, Rita McKenna. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the applicant, the owners of five eleven Palisade Avenue. We're looking for an extension. If you look at the date of our original approval, it was May twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen. And then we filed it with the registrar in twenty nineteen. In uh, right at the beginning of COVID, we filed initially for an extension. We had trouble getting a contractor uh to do the project. It's sort of a difficult project. Um, it was actually a very delicate project because one of the things we're doing is we're combining ground floor residential with an ADA compliant living unit to the rear of the property while maintaining um a decent amount of rear yard. So right now, we're asking for an extension so that we may have the opportunity to build this building. Um, there was a lot of work that went into this building and a lot of design work, as I said, because um we balanced a lot of different um needs for both the community because it's gonna look really nice. Deborah, Deborah did a great job designing it. And that was part of the problem. It's a pretty intensive project to build and that was part of the reason why we're having difficulty getting a contractor who was up to it. Uh, we're confident that we can do that now. And that's all I have to say. If anyone has any questions.
Very good. And uh, and Ms. McKenna cannot, you do have a contractor now and there's an expectation that uh you'll be able to initiate the 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 project.
Yes, we believe, we believe, we believe this project is is ready to go.
Very good. Um, any other questions from the board about this request for an extension? Uh, then do we have any uh questions from the public?
There are no hands right now that I see.
Okay. All right, so then let's hear from staff.
Uh, I'll take this one. So staff has no further comment. Uh, staff recommends approval.
Very good. So do we have a motion from the board?
If you'll make an emotion, you're on mute, mute, excuse me.
Sorry about that. I would move that uh we approve the uh request, the administrative uh it's the administrative uh deal here for uh the property at five eleven Palisades Avenue uh number Z case Z twenty-two zero one one, I believe it is. I had to write it down. Is that correct?
Yeah, I I know. I I didn't have it on my.
I don't have it either, yeah, I don't have that either. I'm looking for it.
Well, I think it might have been a change or update, but I I don't have that one myself, but.
Yeah, I don't have it, that's.
If that's it, that's the motion. I would like, uh, you know.
Second, I'll second.
There we go, all right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Run mute.
Hi.
Commissioner Patel?
Hi.
Commissioner Maney?
Yeah.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Aruho?
Yes.
Acting Chair Donnelly?
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Very good. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so hopefully I am looking at the right agenda here. Um, so the so the 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 next case, as we discussed earlier, which was identified as number ten on the agenda case Z one nine dash zero five zero, the St. Peters Prep case, as discussed earlier, that it's been adjourned to and carried to to May twelfth. The next case on the the agenda case Z zero uh for a D variance. Uh, the applicant is P and T Realty Management LLC and the address is three sixty-one Second Street. And and uh the applicant is B S F Elmo Cowed Jr.
Um, I I apologize, jump right to me. I have to, I have to make sure everybody's here. Hey, I told I I I mailed her.
Good.
Seems like the videos are not working well.
Okay, here. Hearing this.
Apologize. Okay, um. Good evening. Um, my name is Joe Cowed. I'm from the firm of Schuman Hall Morgulies and um represent an IP and T Realty Management, who is the owner of three sixty-one Second Street. Um, and that is block eleven zero zero five, lot thirteen. Um, my understanding is this is a notice application, so um just like to confirm the board's jurisdiction with counsel.
Sure, Mr. Couter. We've looked at your notices, your affidavit, your proof of service, your notice of publication. Everything was in order, so uh Bridgette will mark this as A one for this application.
Hey, one moment, this will be A one, the evidence. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, um. I guess first, um, the this property, three sixty-one Second Street, is a twenty-five by a hundred foot lot in the R five zone. It's about one door down from the restaurant overlay, I believe. Um, it's a three-story building with ground floor retail and two apartments above. Uh, the applicant seeking a D one use variance to open a pizzeria on the first floor.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing Mr. Cowed's uh audio clearly.
Um.
Yeah, Mr. Couter, your audio is going in and out. Uh, it's tough to hear you.
Okay, um, is this better? From the.
It's really up to Bridgette. We heard you say, is it better, but that's about it. Let's let's see what.
Okay, so.
Breath brings.
Um, this is a three-story building with ground floor retail and two floors above. Um, the applicant seeking a D one variance because they want to open up a pizzeria on the first floor. The building owners are, well, the principals of that entity are the owners of Bon Appetito, which they own with Anthony Strobling. If Anthony Strobling is here, um, I was hoping he could be promoted because I would just like him to give a little background about the project. Um, but also present should be Alan Feld, who is the project architect and our planner, Ed Colling of Dresner Robin. So, um, I I don't see anyone promoted or their reason or answer.
So I just promoted Ed. And then I promoted, what was the other one? I'm missing one more.
There's uh Anthony Strobling, S T R O E B L I N G.
So I don't see Anthony, but I also promoted Alan.
Okay, um, you know, we could probably, if you please excuse me, I just wanna tech.
Okay. And I'm I'm sorry, I had to, I was having internet problems. Now I am back using a Wi-Fi hotspot, but I I see that that we have not uh started any expert testimony yet or sworn anyone in, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Uh. You know, let's, we'll start with uh with Alan Feld, who could describe the physical conditions of the property and what the applicant plans to do.
Okay, and he will be qualified as uh an expert planner?
An expert.
Mr. Feld?
Architect.
Expert architect, I'm sorry. Yes, of course. Very good, okay.
Okay, um, I, let me see, can I? Uh, Al, you want me to share my screen with the plants? Can you take us through them? Yes. Okay.
Okay, so um Mr. Feld has appeared before the board many times, but we're gonna have to get him sworn in. Um, and uh and he will also have to testify about the currency of his credentials.
Okay, uh, Mr.
I can't see him because your screen's sharing. Can you say something, Alan, so your box will pop up?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you see?
I don't see you, though.
No.
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 Still don't see you.
Okay. Now.
Yes, okay, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you would state and spell your name for the record.
Alan Feld.
Thank you.
F B L D.
And Mr. Feld has appeared before a board many times and Mr. Feld, uh, you are um, your license is still current in the state of New Jersey.
Yes, they, yes, they are.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. You you may proceed.
So, um, presently, uh, the existing floor is vacant. And we ins- expect extend, expect to install a customer area, a counter and um a new kitchen. Part of the improvements to the property would a be a bio swell in front of the entire cro- front of the building and a new canopy over the pizzeria.
Okay, uh, Mr. Feld, was was there a um, a kitchen there beforehand or or flow or any, um, what work had to be done to make this into a restaurant? Or what has to be done?
Yeah, there may have been. Um, I I don't know for sure.
Okay, um. Now, is there any construction being done to the building itself, to the footprint? Like the outside?
Yes, um, we can um provide soundproofing to the ceiling.
Okay, now. Um, but but the footprint, the footprint of the building is not changing, correct?
That's correct. There's no change to the footprint of the building.
The building coverage is slightly more, it's about seventy-four percent uh, building coverage, slightly more than the max, so. But that's a pre-existing condition, correct?
That is correct.
And the same is true with the rear yard, there's a slight.
That is.
Slight what? I didn't underhe- understand that, there's a slight.
There's a slight shortfall in the rear yard setback, correct?
Correct.
And that's, that's not because of us, that's pre-existing, correct?
Yeah, that's on the existing side yard.
Okay, now. Now I see on the plans that there's gonna be a new flow above the roof. Um, can the new flows be seen from the street?
Say that again?
Can you see the flow from the street?
Are you saying flow, F L O?
F L U E.
Flow, okay.
Yes, for the uh.
Oh, no, you would not be able to see the flu for from the street, no.
Okay. Um. I'm just checking if there's anything else on here. Okay, so. Are you, are you familiar with the improvements done to the facade?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm just going to, all right, I have right here picture, is this about how the building looks, did I? Mr. Feld?
Yes.
Okay, um, if you hold on one second, I just wanna bring up a different picture. Do you recognize this building?
Section.
It's just the same building, is this three sixty-one Second Street prior to the facade improvements of the owner?
Correct.
Okay. I I have nothing further for Mr. Feld. If the board has any questions, I turn it over. Would you like me to put up the drawings again?
Um, now, are are you going to have um another witness?
Yes, the next witness is going to be Ed Colling, who's a professional.
Planner, okay.
Yes.
Because I I think more of the questions might be in the planning context. So I'm I'm suggesting to the board that I think we should probably hear both experts. Then we can ask our questions, we can open it up to the to to the public, unless anyone has a pressing question that they would like to ask right now. Then we can ask our questions, we can open it up to the to to the public, unless anyone has a pressing question that they would like to ask right now. Okay, yeah, so, um, yeah, I I think it would be best to proceed with the planner.
Okay.
I am raising your right hand to be sworn. Excuse me, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Uh, yes, I do.
And if you could just state and spell your name for the record?
First name is Edward, E D W A R D, last name is Colling, K.
Thank you.
I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, certified nationally by the AICP.
And you've appeared before us many times and and your, uh, your license is. Still, still, what's what I'm looking for? It's it's still effective and good standing of the state of New Jersey.
Yep, that was the next thing I was going to get to. My license is current and my certification is current.
Thanks, Ed. All right, let's roll.
Whoa. If if you're not speaking, can everybody mute themselves, please? Thank you.
Hi. Uh, good evening, Mr. Colling. Are you familiar with this project, three sixty?
Uh, yes, I, yes, I am. I've reviewed the plans over over the course of time. It's taken a while for this project to evolve. I've also reviewed the zoning ordinance and, uh, very familiar with the, uh, with the neighborhood in the area.
Alright, thanks.
Um, do you just like we need to just go into the plan this morning?
Yes, please, I just.
Well, um. As you know, the application is being, uh, is before you because we're looking to do a category two restaurant. Uh, which is not permitted in the R R five zone, except in the restaurant overlay area, which is, by the way, right. Next door, uh, facing onto Monmouth Street. Um, the commercial space, to my knowledge, had been used for a. Commercial restaurant at some point in the past. The earlier plans that I had seen that.
I'm 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 sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Colling. Am I the only one who's not seeing Mr. Colling's video?
I can see it.
Okay.
I can see Ed, yes.
Okay, it's just a strange night. Okay.
Um.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I had seen it showed that the space prior to renovation did contain a, uh, commercial kitchen. And it had a ventilation system that went up through the, uh. The back portion of the building, the the one-story portion of the building. Um, it was in fairly poor condition, as you saw from the picture that Mr. Okada had shown before. It had a brick. veneer on the ground floor, asphalt shingles above. It was, looked pretty, pretty old and worn and tired. Uh, at the time. Um, the city's tax records indicated that there were, is a three-story building and two residential units over a commercial unit, and. In fact, that's what it, uh, it was and is. Um, the, uh. The co- the property, uh, on the ground floor today has a a commercial use in it. And at the time that I was, I was contracted, the, uh, ground floor was was vacant. Uh, and that's when the building was, as I, as I said, said before, was in a somewhat dilapidated, uh, condition. Um. Today, as you saw, the building's been significantly renovated. There's a new brick facade, there's new siding on the sides. Windows and a and a much more appealing and attractive, uh, commercial storefront. Um, the property is, as I mentioned before, in the R five, uh, district. Um, that the district does allow for for mixed uses. Um, I think that, uh, although it doesn't provide for a commercial, uh, restaurant. Uh, class category two in in this location. I believe that this site is well suited for the proposed restaurant use. Uh, the exist- existing building already contains the ground floor commercial unit. Um, and as I, it had been used, as I said before, for a restaurant use with a ventilation system. Um, also, the property is immediately across the street from an N C zone where this restaurant use would be permitted. And, uh, it's just next door to the, uh, restaurant overlay district, again, where this where use would be permitted. And in fact, within this, the R five zone, when you already have a commercial space, you would be able to have a ca- cafe restaurant. Um, now, the difference between a cafe restaurant and the, uh, category two restaurant, there's very, very little difference. The cafe restaurant is is considered to have a, uh, as a smaller scale restaurant, it has limited seating. Uh, engaged in serving light meals and it's designed to operate for substantial carryout service, delivery service, self-service. Counter service, and it may, but it's not required to include on-premise premise consumption. Now, the category two definition is really ex- exactly the same. Um, or almost exactly the same. It's also designed to include substantial carryout service, delivery service, self-service. And, uh, may, but it's not, again, not required to include on-premise consumption, consumption. The difference is that in a cafe restaurant, no commercial kitchen or ventilation system are permitted. In this case, however, in this building, the commercial kitchen and ventilation system already existed. So I think that also goes toward the particular suitability of this particular property for the category two restaurant. Because but for that ventilation system, this use would would be would be permitted. Um. Now, going to the positive criteria, I believe that the approval of the project requesting this variance, so would. Will guide the appropriate use and development of the property in a manner that promotes the general welfare. The granting of the variance will allow for the reuse of existing commercial space in a location that's well suited for commercial activity. And it's consistent with other commercial uses and, uh, mixed-use characters surrounding the area. I'd point out that one of the purposes really of the R five district is to promote the reuse of these commercial. These commercial storefronts in order to maintain the character of the R five district. So in that way, we're consistent with the zone. And in that way, also, we promote a subcategory of two A of the Municipal Land Use Law. Uh, the property also provides sufficient space in appropriate location for this proposed restaurant use. As I've described, the building actually contained a restaurant-type use with the ventilation system and kitchen, uh, previously. Um, and it has an existing commercial storefront, so it's really an appropriate location with sufficient space with the type of use.
Wait, now, um, Ed, your papers are on top of your mic. Can you repeat that last part? So it's really. So it's really an appropriate location with sufficient space?
For the proposed restaurant use.
Thank you.
And lastly, I think if this project, um, promotes a, an improved aesthetic, uh, uh, condition and a more desirable visual environment. Which is subcategory of two I, I E, I recognize that the improvements have already been made. But I believe that the property owner, yeah, current property owner had had purchased this property with the intent of putting his restaurant in this location. Not realizing that it would require a use variance. So really, this this property's improvement was done with the intent of relocating the business. His business here, and, uh, in that regard, is really the improvements are really a result of this, of this project. Notwithstanding the fact that they've really been done prior to the the case getting before the board. Um, in terms of the negative criteria, uh, the approval of the restaurant, I don't think will result in any substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. The commercial space is already existing. It has existed for many years. I don't believe this, but this will result in any substantial in- uh, increased detriment. Or any detriment really at all. As I described, a permitted cafe, uh, restaurant would have the same kind of operation. In terms of deliveries, in terms of substantial takeout and and everything else, it simply would not have the ventilation system. And in this case, the ventilation system had previously existed, so I, in granting this variance, I don't think there's any real, uh, substantial detrimental impact. That would be any different than what would happen if it was a cafe restaurant. Um. And, uh, in terms of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and any impact on that, as I mentioned, the R five district does, uh, promote. The reuse of these commercial spaces. It does promote having these mixed uses, uh, uses within the district. And in terms of, um, maintaining the character of the area, so I think that this pro- this this project does do that and actually promotes the intent of the zone. Plan rather than having any detrimental impact. So I think therefore that we have met both the positive and negative criteria. Uh, the site is particularly well-suited for the, for the intended purpose. There's no substantial detriment to the, uh, to the zone plan. Or to the, uh, general welfare, and I think that we promote the purposes of the municipal landlord, land use law in terms of the positive criteria. Concludes my testimony.
I I noticed that, uh, Tony Stroblin has actually entered. I I I suggest that President Trump, when this gets turned over to the public, he can answer any questions. The public has any questions.
Okay, and is that, is the, and I'm sorry, who is that person you reference? Is that the owner?
Uh, yeah, he he's one of the pizzeria owners.
Okay.
Okay, I'll promote him now.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and, um, I I'm suggesting to to the board that I think. Um, maybe we hold our questioning until we hear from the 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 public. Um, I think that might be more efficient that that way, so. Um, so actually, can can we check to see if there are any questions or comments from the the public? On the testimony offered by the applicants to experts, um, reminding the the public that we ask that you please. Limit your questions and comments to three minutes and Commissioner Green has been kind enough, kind enough to help us. Uh, watch the timing on those things.
Oh, I see two hands raised. The first person I am promoting is Rob Crowe.
Okay. All right.
And if you would unmute yourself, there you go. Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state, spell your name and provide your address?
Sure. Robert Crowe, R O B E R T, Crowe, C R O W, three six five Second Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. You can proceed.
Thank you. So, um, real quick, um, I know there's a lot to get to tonight. My family's lived here in Jersey City for thirty-one years. I've lived at three sixty-five Second Street for twenty-three years, uh, raised three kids here. Um, all three are Second Street born and raised, so I know every inch of this street. Um. You know, a lot of my issues have to do with all the work I know that the V and A has done with the R five, and I know that's going to be addressed by Eric. From the, uh, Neighborhood Association. Um, my my concerns, and there are very many here, um, have to do with the safety. Would have to do with everything that this this, uh, property would bring, this this type of commercial space would bring to our street. Um, there's a lot of issues right now with delivery trucks on the corner. My kids have to catch a bus in the triangle at Colgate. I'm sorry, at, um, at Monmouth, Second and Newark, and it's a nightmare for them to get to the, uh, to the bus stop. It's. Extremely congested. I know there's, there's traffic studies being, uh, taking place right now on Monmouth. It's extremely congested. Double parked cars for Diesel and Duke. There's a liquor store across the street that there's a lot of double parked trucks delivering. It's an absolute nightmare. Now, having worked here for the last two years at home, uh, it's, it's just gotten worse and worse and worse. Um, I would say with everything that this proposal brings, it's not gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a detriment to the neighborhood. Um, I live in a mixed-use building. This ground floor is commercial. I have a vent right over there. That used, this used to be a bakery. Does that mean I can do whatever I want? Because it at one time stood as a bakery or as a wedding hall, which it was for a long time. Or a cheese shop. I understand the differences between a cafe and a restaurant. I just think we should all play with the R five that we, um. We work so hard to create. Thank you. Back back in the day, all of these businesses were accessed by an alleyway behind us. That was, that goes for Monmouth, all of this strip of Second Street and for Brunswick Street. So sanitation, deliveries were all done in the back. It's just not gonna work. I'm totally against this. My my three kids, my wife, we love pizza. We're all against it as well. So. Thank you for your time and, um, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Promoting Eric Hoffman.
Eric, raise your right hand to be sworn, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state, spell your name and provide your address?
Yep, uh, my name is Eric Hoffman, E R I C H O F M A N N. I live at three ninety, three nine zero First Street. In the Village.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman, you you can proceed with your questions or comments.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Um, I'm, my name is Eric Hoffman. I am the president of the. Village Neighborhood Association. You heard from me last month and several times in the years past. Um, I do want to welcome Commissioner Cruz. Welcome to the show. Congratulations on your appointment. Um, and I apologize to everyone if there's any background noise. I'm literally at Kalen Point, uh, teaching soccer, but this is important. I wanted to make, uh. You know, a statement just as a conduit, if you will, for the comments from the community, applicants for this particular project, this variance request. Came to, uh, a V and A community meeting last month, uh, which was admittedly packed, the agenda, that is. Um, and as a result, uh, we didn't get through all the comments and invited them back. To April's meeting, which happened on on Tuesday night. Uh, I just want to say a couple of things, uh, just to clarify. So this particular property. Uh, while it is true, there's ventilation in place, there, it is true, it was used, um, as a restaurant usage. Uh, the the reason it was approved as such is it was a prep kitchen, so there were, you know, there were, there were no customers, there were no. Uh, you know, daily deliveries. Uh, this was, uh. This was a kitchen that was, you know, preparing food for a part, uh, in Gerald Square. So there was a lot of cooking going on. Um, but again, you know, the types of deliveries that we would expect to see, uh, with with a restaurant category two usage as a pizzeria. Are are significantly different, and I would respectfully disagree with the comments, uh, you know, made relative to a cafe and a restaurant category. Two having only ventilation. The cafe is not baking or cooking anything in its place. They're not receiving, you know. Cheese, flour, you know, the 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 types of deliveries that.
One minute.
Getting, yep, thank you, in a, in a, uh, commercial kitchen, it is very different. Cafe usage is like the new coffee shop into the void or or Prado Bakery.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hoffman, could you maybe like, uh, bring the microphone up to your mouth? The, I I'm hearing all the kids in the background. Talk louder.
Sorry, I'm gonna walk away from them.
Thank you.
Um, so. So again, sorry, I just wanted to make that that point. I think, I think this represents a significant difference in 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 the use of just giving. You know, foot traffic and deliveries, concerns we heard from the community were, you know, primarily relative to Second Street, you know, being adjacent to an overlay zone. Or next to, or across the street for a required use does not make it, you know, so, right? I mean, the zoning exists for for a reason. And as the V and A, we worked with planning, worked with developers, worked with city to create the R five. Our position has always been that. You know, a D variance must come with a demonstrable benefit to the community and from what we heard from the community in the past two meetings, was that was not the case. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Promoting Irene Barnaby.
Hello. Hello, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the test? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you can state and spell your full name and provide your address?
Irene Barnaby, two zero six Fifth Street. It's I R E N E, and the last name is B A R N A B Y.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm also here to oppose this application. Like Ed mentioned, this is not in the restaurant overlay. It's in a highly residential street. It's a very narrow street where the deliveries would be difficult. And there's so much more residential development that has happened in the neighborhood, in the direct vicinity. And I feel like this is the exact reason by there, why variances expire. And I think it should say expired, and I'm just here to voice my objection to the approval of this variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bar- Barnaby. Thank you very much. Okay, any other members from the public?
That's the last hand I see.
Okay. So, so, so first, Mr. Cowda, would you like, would you or your witnesses like to address some of the comments raised?
I, yes, just as to the last comment from Ms. Barnaby. Is this question I'll pose either to Board Attorney or to Mr. Colling? Do variances expire?
No, the variance doesn't expire unless the use is abandoned. And it was so, and I don't, don't know if that's, if we're, if that's even at, in question here. Because we are applying for a D one use variance. We're not arguing whether or not there was a previous variance for our restaurant on the site and that we were trying to continue it. So I don't know if that's really relevant.
Okay. I guess just, I would ask one question. Tony Staubling is here right now, will be operating. The restaurant should approve. Hey, Tony, can you just?
Well, let me ask where the witness. Mr. Staubling, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And could you state and spell your full name?
Anthony Staubling, A N T H O N Y, S T O E B L I N G.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just very, like, you provide the back, the, just how you came to want to put your pizzeria at three sixty-one Second Street?
Yes, we had, we had our business originally on Grove Street, and unfortunately, the building went on fire. Wasn't our fire, it was an apartment fire in the building. It was electrical and the whole building came down. So at that point, we were, we just scrambled and we took the first available place, which is where we are now. It's really not suitable for, for the type of business we do, but we're, we're trying to make the best of it. We've been here for a while now.
Sorry, where are you right now?
We're at five twenty Jersey Avenue on the corner of Jersey and Columbus. And, you know, we, we've been having some issues here. The landlord won't give us a lease. He's trying to double our rent. It's, it's just been one, one thing after another. When we were looking for a new location, for a more permanent location, because this was always going to be temporary for us. We, we found the spot on Second Street and we thought it was perfect for us. It already had the hood, so we didn't think there was going to be any issues when we purchased the building. And that's where we planned on putting our new pizzeria. You know, we, we've been downtown now for what, six, about fifteen years? Fifteen years or so. And, you know, we're, we're a neighborhood place. We're, we're very good. We're all neighbors, all our customers. The people in the neighborhood love us. You know, we take care of everything. If there's any, if there's ever any kind of issues or problems, we help everyone out. You know, we're, we're, we're just trying to make a business. That's all. We're just trying to continue our business and we'd like to put it in the building that we purchased to, to make the business end.
Okay, so then did you attend these, these meetings with Village Neighborhood or something?
Yes, I, I attended the last two.
Okay, and you've heard the concerns.
Ricky, you're, you're breaking up.
Have you heard the concerns of the neighbors?
Yes, and I did the best I can to address everyone's concern. I told them, you know, when we're operating, if anyone ever has any kind of issues or problems, come to me directly. I will do the best I can to straighten out anything I can. Someone brought up in the meeting that, you know, we didn't, we didn't reach out to our neighbor, which, I want to go on record as saying we actually did. We didn't, we didn't get a reply. But we actually did help that gentleman. He had a, a situation where he needed something repaired. And my, my partner Tony, he can actually speak on this a little better because he, he's the one that handled it.
Well, I, yes. We want to swear him.
Oh, yeah.
But anyway, I just want the focus on, on the issues with deliveries. How do you plan on doing deliveries? Do you drive, do you do bikes, or how?
Well, we're going to, we're going to, you know, we're going to, we're going to switch over to bikes. There's, there's a lot of traffic in Jersey City now, the gas prices. All our drivers want to switch over to bikes anyway because it's just more efficient. They can get around town faster. They don't have to spend the money they do on gas. We're going to have a bike rack in front of the store so they can park the bikes in the bike rack when they're not in use. And we feel this will, it shouldn't add to any kind of traffic on the block.
Are you going to, or is double parked in front of your restaurant?
Not at all. We're going to, we're going to be on bikes, so they're going to be a bike rack, like I just stated, so there shouldn't be any double parking. And besides, it's a one-lane street, so it, it doesn't make sense for anyone to double park in a one-lane street because nobody can get by.
Do you find that your customers that get pickup, do they walk or do they drive?
Most of them are walking by. This is a very walkable neighborhood, as everyone knows. Most people walk to where they need to go. Parking's not very convenient, so most people, once they have a spot, they keep it for the night. So most of our, most of the people that pick up, they, they walk from their home and they, and they just pick it up and carry it home.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
I have nothing further.
Okay, so now we can open this up for questions from the board.
Um, I just have a question. Is this located on, and the, I was trying to figure out where it's located. Is this between Monmouth and, and Brunswick? Is that, is that the, where the, where the, the building is located on Second Street?
Yes.
Yes.
Monmouth and Brunswick?
Yes, Commissioner, and just to add to it, it's, it's one, one door in from Monmouth Street, so it's more towards, much closer to Monmouth than Brunswick.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so it's kind of right by that little triangle. Is it like, North Avenue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're breaking up, Mr. Crowe. I can't understand you.
If you'd like, I could put up the tax map.
Sure.
Okay.
So, any other?
Yes, I have a question. I couldn't see the diagrams or the drawings, the plans during the present. Okay, now I can, but I all had them on my other computer. So I see that it's attached on one side. Is the building attached on one side or it's not attached at all to either side?
Let's take a look. Do you see that?
Yeah. Yeah, I can see that. So I'm not sure if on the, looking at the storefront, the way it's to the left, is that attached to this structure to the, next to it?
Alan, I can describe it a little bit. It, the, the building to the left, the green building, actually fronts onto Monmouth Street. So that's the rear of the building on Monmouth Street, which I think is called Diesel and.
Yeah.
Diesel and Dean, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
They're attached.
Right, so they're, they have a zero lot line, but they're actually two distinct buildings.
Then there's an alley on the right side. Okay, and also I do believe that Mr. Feld said that you can't see the ventilation system from the sidewalk, from the street. Where is the ventilation, ventilation system running? Side, the back? Where is it at?
The, the, the front of the building is three stories. The ground floor extends to the rear and is one story, so the vent comes up in the middle of the one-story section.
Okay.
Right towards the middle, or it's, and right under, which is existing one-story brick. If you could see the screen, there's two square.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I don't know if this would be feasible, and this is almost a question more for, for our attorney, Mr. La Paglia. But, you know, the, the owner, the, the applicant testified that they would be using bicycles for delivery. Is there, I know that we, we couldn't enforce that, but is there some way that we could make that into a condition for approval or consider doing something like that?
I imagine we can consider it, but as you said in the question, how would somebody enforce that?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so I, I think the objections of many of the, the neighbors kind of have to do with the fact that it is a zoned residential street. It's a super narrow street. Use of bicycle traffic for deliveries would kind of ease some of that situation. But, but what about deliveries that you get on the receiving end? You know, receiving ingredients, receiving restaurant equipment, that sort of thing. How, how is that going to be handled at this location?
Tony, can you answer?
Yes, well, as far as restaurant equipment, I mean, once the store is set up and equipped, I mean, that's really not an issue. So that's just like somebody moving into an apartment. You know, there'll be a moving truck. In other cases, it'll be, you know, just unloading the equipment. One time, everything's off the truck and the truck's gone. I mean, that's no different than anybody, any resident moving in or out of an apartment. So that's pretty, pretty much the same. As far as the deliveries from, from our suppliers, I would imagine that they would probably park on Newark Avenue and bring it over with a hand truck. Because where we are now, well, I mean, we see the trucks all over the street here and they, they park here, they park wherever they can. And they truck the stuff all the way over to Newark Avenue since you can't drive there. So I mean, the, you know, the, the truck drivers, the operators, they, they, you know, they find their spots, but they're not going to park on the street because traffic can't get by. So I mean, they don't do that on other streets, so, you know, they're not going to do it just for, you know, for our shop. They're going to handle it the same way they handle all the other restaurants on the side streets all over Jersey City.
And, and I have a comment. Isn't there a restaurant right on the right-hand side, almost going to Brunswick?
Yes, there is.
There is a restaurant?
Yes.
Is that open also?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board on this application?
Yes, yes, Jim, Madam Chairman, Mr. Staubling. Are you, you, hopefully you heard, I guess, a couple of the, the witnesses, and they were concerned about safety for children, congestion. What would you have to say about those kinds of things for a neighborhood? I know it's, you, you want your business to be a, a, a good business. But how would you handle that comment from the witnesses?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question. What kind of safety issues do you think a restaurant would pose to the public?
Well, I, I think what was said was that the, the traffic, the additional traffic for the restaurant, people may be picking up or things like that. That was, seemed to be a concern that your neighbors had.
Yeah, I thought I addressed that. Like I said, our drivers will be using the bikes. Most of the Uber drivers use the bikes nowadays. I'm sure everyone is familiar with the Uber drivers all over town. They're, they're all on bikes now. Once in a while, they're in a car, but most of them are on bikes nowadays. As far as people coming to pick up food, as I had stated again a little while ago, most of the people that pick up the food here do walk. People that drive, they're going to have to find a parking spot, just like they do wherever they, you know, visit any other place in town, park their car and come in and get their food and leave. I have no control over, over those people. I definitely have control over my dri- my drivers and I can control that. But most of the, most of the people in town, when they, when they drive somewhere, they find a parking spot. And they go into, you know, the place that they want to go and visit, and they do their shopping or whatever it is that they're doing. And, you know, that's up, that's up to the, the, the people that are coming to park the car legally and, and handle it that way, just like anywhere else. Thank you.
Okay, and, and, and to, to that point, Mr. Staubling, so are you're, you're using Uber Eats for deliveries?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. And like I said, most of those guys, Uber Eats and Grubhub, and I never see anybody in a car anymore. I mean, I, I would say, if I had to guess, I would say probably like eighty percent of them are on bikes now. I never see anybody coming in a car. Most of them pull up on the bike and they just, they're in and out right away, because we usually have the food ready. We click a button to let them know they're ready, and that's when they come in. We hand them the food and they're out. That's it. It's pretty efficient.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's all over Jersey City, Hoboken, you know, it's, it's pretty common. Most of the guys use bikes because it's a lot easier for them to get around.
Yeah, although if, if you don't live downtown, and I, I live in the Heights, if I order food from downtown and it comes via Uber Eats, somebody's usually delivering it in a car. So I, I can understand where, you know, people might be coming from to that point.
Like I said, it, it's not a hundred percent, but most, the majority of the drivers are on bikes, but I'm sure there are some on cars. And again, you know, they have to use their judgment as drivers. That's what they do for a living. They usually park legally because, you know, they don't want to get a ticket, so, you know, they'll, they'll park their car and they'll come in.
Okay. Anyone else from the board have any further questions for any of the witnesses? Okay. All right, let's hear from planning. Let's hear from the city.
Before I begin, just to clarify, did we close the public comment portion?
Oh, I, I, I did not. So to that end, are there any, are there any other members of the public with questions or comments who haven't spoken already?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we're going to close the public portion. Thank you, Lindsay.
Okay, yeah, no worries. Right, so the applicant is proposing to convert the ground floor commercial space on the property. That the tax records do identify a commercial use on the property into a category two restaurant. The residential use is to remain. No changes are proposed to those upper stories, as you heard. The applicant, like I said, is proposing a category two restaurant use, which is not permitted in the R five zone. Based on the definitions of category, category one restaurant or cafe and category two restaurant, which is what's before the board tonight. What separates this use from the permitted use, the cafe, is the proposed ventilation and commercial kitchen. Like I said, the existing building includes commercial on the ground floor. In this zone, retail, offices and cafes are permitted on the ground floor where there are existing legal storefronts. While the proposed restaurant use does not fall under those three categories that I just read, the main difference is the proposed commercial kitchen and ventilation. Think you've heard already, there are some similar uses in the vicinity of the project. For example, there is a takeout establishment on the same block, one lot away as the subject property. Some improvements to the site include updated signage where there is none. An important one is trash storage relocation to the cellar in order to provide a trash storage plan rather than storage outside. That's an improvement to the property. Plus a bio swale, which is a form of green infrastructure or low-impact stormwater management along the right-of-way fronting the property. As you heard, this is a narrow street, so a bio swale is more appropriate for the site. It also helps meet purposes of the zoning in this district to address and mitigate the impact of flooding in low-lying vulnerable areas and to create a more resilient neighborhood for future generations. I think the proposed bio swales help meet the purposes of the R five zone. That's all I have to contribute beyond Mr. Colling. I wanted to keep it brief. Yeah, like I said, that's all I have beyond what Mr. Colling already testified to. Be happy to answer some questions if anyone has any.
Any questions from the board?
When was, when was that other takeout put into place? That's been there for many, many years, am I right? Because I'm thinking the same place.
I'm not sure. I would just be like anecdotal if anyone knows.
Yeah, that's been there a very, very long time.
Are there any other questions?
Word. All right. Do we have a motion on this application?
Oh, sorry, I forgot. I'm really sorry, Commissioner Green. I didn't mention that staff recommends approval with the conditions that I outlined in my staff report, which are the standard conditions.
Madam Chairman, I recommend approval of this, of case number Z20070 at the address 361 Second Street with conditions.
Do we have a second for Commissioner Green's motion?
I second it.
Okay, just to verify, this is a motion to approve? Okay, a motion to approve. Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Hi.
Commissioner Maney?
No.
Commissioner Rujo?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
No.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Donnelly?
Um, I'm actually going to vote yes on this application, and I think the thing that for me makes the difference is the proximity to the commercial district and that it is only one building away. I am hopeful that the owner, in light of the fact that you may get this narrow approval, will also be true to what he testified to today.
With five in favor, two opposed. Motion carries with conditions.
Right, thank you.
Thank you so much, guys. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck. Stick to your words.
I absolutely will. And like I had stated numerous times with the community meetings, if anyone ever has any kind of issues, just bring it directly to me. You don't have to go there. Just come straight to me. Any problems we have, we'll fix it right away. That's a promise.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, Lindsay?
Yes.
I'm looking at my agenda. Well, we'll have a break, but I'm just looking at my agenda. Can we skip over 216 Palisade Avenue?
We did. So the original agenda had it ordered that way. I did send out the revised Sunshine Agenda. I mean, every agenda ordering is subject to change. And I think it may be for the best because I think this is a bigger project that's next. So yeah, like I think Kate was saying, I think we should take a break and then pick up with 216 Palisade.
216 Palisade, and then I will make sure that I'm using the right version of the agenda.
How long is the break? Just so I know how long I have to put a little one down, like how quick I need to be.
I imagine at least 10 minutes or more, no?
Let's, let's make it, let's make it 10 minutes then. Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, so, so it's 8:16 now, and let's resume at, yeah, let's resume a little bit after 8:25, 8:27, 11 minutes.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right.
Hi, Tonya.
Well.
Good.
Very good. All right, so welcome back to the next session of the zoning board hearing this evening. The next application that we'll be hearing is application number Z20-100 for 216 Palisade Avenue. The applicant seeks preliminary and final major site plan with a D variance. The applicant will be represented by Charles Harrington. Mr. Harrington, we assume you'll be promoted shortly and you can proceed.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the record, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant. For this application tonight, just as an administrative matter, I did renotice for this hearing, even though it had been carried from prior meetings, and I'd like that to have marked into the record.
Yes, so Mr. Harrington, we have reviewed your notices, your affidavit and your proof of service, and your notice of publication. So Bridget, we'll mark that as A1 in evidence for this application.
One moment. A1 in evidence.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Harrington.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, tonight before you, we have an application for a use variance to permit a mixed-use building that has residential units as well as a medical office use. And we're also asking for relief on a C variance for relief from the lot coverage. This property is located in the medical district along Palisade Avenue. It's on the eastern side of Palisade Avenue and is surrounded by a parking field, if you will, that belongs to Carepoint Hospital. The proposal tonight is for a five-story building with 20 residential units and the medical office that I just mentioned. Of those 20 units, we are proposing that two will be reserved for moderate income or as moderate income units, and one will be reserved as a low-income affordable unit. And I note that the application before you is not subject to the ICO because it was filed and completed well before the initial ICO. And then when that was struck down, it was actually, you know, completed, well, it still is not, not subject to the ICO. So these are affordable housing units that are being proposed and were proposed by my client without any mandate as part of this project. It also is providing for 23 parking spaces. The lot is a little over 6,600 square feet. I note that the medical district permits buildings up to 10 stories and 100 feet. Admittedly, this, the residential multifamily is not a permitted use, but it does permit similar uses for support for service, support housing for the medical uses in the area and for senior housing. So we're proposing a five-story, and as you'll see during the presentation, it really reads as a four-story from the street because it's set, it's set back on the fifth floor. So with that said, I have three witnesses tonight. Anthony Vandermark is my architect, Calisto Burton is my civil engineer and traffic expert, and Charles Height is my planner. So I'm going to start off with Mr. Vandermark to give you an overview of the project.
Is where or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Anthony. And if you could just state and spell your name for the record?
Absolutely. That is Anthony Vandermark, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y, B as in Victor, A-N-D-E-R-M-A-R-K, MBMK Architecture.
And Mr. Vandermark has appeared before this board numerous times and been accepted as an expert in architecture.
Yes, and we do accept his credentials if he just validate that his license is up to date.
Yes, my license is up to date. Thank you, Chair.
Very good. You may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. What I'm going to do is share my screen with everyone here. And Chuck, I think we should enter this as an exhibit. There's a few slides in here that have some existing conditions that were not part of the board filing package. Nothing from an architectural standpoint, however, there are some existing photographs that I wanted to enter in.
Okay, if we, if we could offer this as A2, and Anthony, if you could identify how many, how many sheets are within your slide deck?
Within my slide deck, I have 27 sheets in my slide deck. I don't plan on using them all. I'm planning on using approximately maybe 16.
Okay, but we'll, we'll enter all of them as A2 and we'll submit a copy to Planning.
Yes.
A2.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So what I have before you this evening is the property of 216 Palisades Avenue. As you can see here, it's highlighted in red. As Chuck had previously mentioned, we have 6,640 square feet, which is the point of 0.15 acres. It's on Palisades Avenue, eastern side. It is off the intersection of Jefferson Avenue, as you can see here in the center of the page. The project has 60 feet fronting Palisades Avenue, and it has a depth of 110 feet. So it's a, it's kind of an irregular lot as far as the dimensions go. Directly behind the lot, as you can see, we have approximately 120 feet of asphalt parking lot, and then you hit the cliff line going down the hill. Immediately to our north, we have the one-story Carepoint Office Building, which is the Human Resources, and directly to our south, adjacent to us, we have a three-story mixed-use building with a pharmacy at the base.
And can I just ask you, Anthony, did you say 16 feet fronting or 60?
60. I apologize.
60, right? 60. Okay, I didn't think of a 16.
Thank you. Subject property, the pre-existing two-story mixed-use building has since been raised. We do have a vacant lot that is currently on site. The existing condition was 100% impervious. As part of this application, we are substantially improving that, and we'll get to that in a few minutes. As previously stated, directly to the north, we have a one-story gable roof office structure that services the Carepoint Health Facility. And directly to our south, we have a three-story mixed-use building with the pharmacy at the base residential above. Our new proposal, we are proposing a five-story masonry building, mixed juice, as Chuck had previously mentioned. Fronting on Palisades, we have a four-story portion with a mansard roof, and the fifth floor is set back off the street facade 15 feet. General overview of the project, we are proposing a five-story structure at 50 feet in total height. Each floor is at 10 feet floor-to-floor, thus totaling 50. We are proposing 20 residential units as part of this project. Of the 20 units, we have 10 one-bedrooms, six one-bedrooms plus then, and four two-bedrooms. Of those two, of those 20 units, we do have three affordable, two moderate and one low-income, thus providing 17 market rate and three affordable. We're proposing a 2,205 square foot medical office. We are proposing 23 parking spaces. At this time, 19 would be designated for the residential units with four servicing the office use and spill over after hour back to the residential portions and to visitors. We're proposing 14 internal bike spaces with two exterior, and we are proposing over 2,000 square feet of green roof area with a stormwater detention system. Again, the subject property is 100% impervious with no stormwater detention. It has a centrally located curb cut that will be eliminated, and that curb cut will be moved to the northern side of the property. The hatched area in this graphic, which is the existing survey and existing conditions, was the two-story mixture structure that has since been removed. Again, the existing condition here was a surface parking lot, which is on the southern portion. As you can see here, they had parking spaces lined up to the southern part of the property. Concrete asphalt mixture as part of the impervious, and then you had a two-story structure. So as part of this proposal, I will start with the outside and work my way in. We are proposing all-new curbing in sidewalks at the front end of the property on Palisades Avenue. We're proposing two new street trees that will be compliant with the Jersey City Forestry Standard. We are proposing two exterior bicycle parking spaces located within the trees, as you can see. We're proposing a 16-foot-wide curb cut with the flared apron. It would be 20 feet width. The five-story portion of this structure is centrally located. The four-story portion of the structure is from the fronting on Palisades Avenue with a 15-foot setback to the rear of the property. We have 100% lot coverage, which is only accounts for one story of the project. We're proposing a 22-foot setback to the rear. As part of the upper floors, floors two, three, four, and five, we are proposing a five-foot panel levered balcony that will hover above the proposed roof decks. Proposed first floor, again, working your way from Palisades Avenue into the garage. We are proposing a two-garage door system. We are proposing a garage door at Palisades with a designated horn strobe at 6 feet with a warning indicator light, and then also at the sidewalk for pedestrian safety, we are proposing a linear LED, a flashing light when the garage door operates. So if pedestrians happen to be looking down or looking at their phone, we will have safety covered both at eye level and also at the sidewalk level. As you can see here, we have, we have a dual-portion garage. The front portion of the garage will service the commercial medical office. We're proposing four parking spaces. We are proposing an internal drop-off zone should people come to deliver patients via vehicle. We had discussed this internally with ownership, and the garage door during the medical office use hours will remain open. This way, people coming to the medical office space will have a place to park, and they will not have to basically wait at the curb apron to enter the garage. So the garage door will always be open with four designated parking spaces for the medical offices. We have a secondary door for security that will be used for the residential parking mechanical rack system. So in the back, we have 19 designated spaces for the residential use. Again, we have essentially located turnaround zones, so cars enter. If they need to exit, they will not be backing back down into Palisades. They will create a K-turn at the drop-off zone and then slowly exit the garage. By electric eye, you will be triggering the alarm devices both in the sidewalk and at the building line to indicate to pedestrians that a car will be leaving the garage. We also have a proposed trash room with trash chute. Again, we have a management company that will be collecting trash and then bringing it to the curb line. To the left part of this graphic, we are proposing a cellar as part of this project, mostly for utility. Internally, we have 14 bicycle parking spaces. And as you can see here to the graphic on the left, we're proposing a significant stormwater detention system, which will be in the drive aisle of the parking garage. So the upper floors on the project, second floor plan is all the way to the left. Let me zoom in a little bit for everyone. On the second floor, fronting Palisades, we have a 2,205 square foot medical office. That office, again, will be accessed either through the garage or pedestrian patients who will be coming through the main lobby door. The elevator will provide both security for both the medical office and the residential units. Anybody actually entering medical office will not have access to the upper floors via elevator that will require five to the tenants. Anybody actually entering medical office will not have access to the upper floors via elevator that will require five to the tenants. This proposed second floor also has three additional residential units. The eastern part of the property. As part of this proposal, at the second floor, we have two one-bedroom units that range between six hundred and twenty-four square feet and six hundred and eighty-two square feet and we have one two-bedroom unit and nine hundred and sixty square feet. So we have three residential units, one medical office at the second floor. Each one of these residential units have a outdoor, which is called a roof terrace or private terrace. So they are shared. Some are bigger than the others at four hundred and eighty-five square feet, four hundred and sixty-five square feet and three hundred square feet. Again, private terraces for the rear portion of the residential units. Going back to the base of the building. Again, as previously stated, we are providing or proposing a hundred percent lock coverage at the first floor. However, when the building steps back at twenty-two feet on the rear yard setback, we are proposing a night, excuse me, seventy-nine percent lock coverage, which is thus under the eighty and being compliant with the medical zone of the Jersey City LDO. Floors three and four are typical. We have six units per floor. Each floor has four one bedrooms and again, they range from six twenty-four to seven hundred and fifty-four square feet. We have one, one bedroom plus ten at seven hundred and thirty-five square feet and one two-bedroom at nine hundred and sixty square feet. So you have six units per floor at floors three and four, twelve units in total. Coming up to the fifth floor. The building now steps back. The original rendering had shown you that sightlines, the top floor are set back from the fifth floor fifteen feet, thus not being able to be seen from across the street from both the south and central location on Palisades. This fifth floor has four one bedrooms and they range from five eighty-nine to six hundred and eighty-two square feet. We have one two-bedroom again and nine hundred and sixty square feet. Each one of these private terraces, both at the second floor and at the fifth floor on both the north and south locations have very high planter box for privacy, both for the adjacent neighbors and also for the people that these decks have served. Now, the upper roof, as previously stated, we have two thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven square feet of extensive green roof. That's between the principal main roof and then the amenity roof. So that's the equivalent of thirty-two percent of the overall property. So it's a substantial amount of extensive green roof. This goes towards, you know, more of the green building elements that Jersey City is now looking for and also it's part of the stormwater management system plan. Also, as part of the main roof, we are providing a one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven common area roof deck that's accessed from a four hundred and thirty-four square foot rooftop amenity space. The deck planter detail for privacy is also located on the sheet to the right. The proposed building facade, as previously mentioned, we're at five stories and fifty feet in total. We took a analysis on the pre-existing structures in the neighborhood. There are a lot of different type of roofing systems, mostly mansard in the immediate intersection in the, in the adjacent neighborhood. And we felt this was a, a, a good opportunity to make a contemporary building with a kind of a traditional mansard roofing system here. So as you can see, the predominant material on the front facade, especially on the lower three floors are a modular brick masonry. This is a full-size brick. That is going to be in a two-color system. On the ends, we have a lighter buff-colored masonry brick and then in the center, a slightly darker beige brick. The offsets in the windows, as you, as you can see, is an ACM corrugated material. And that matches the third floor cornice line, which again is a ACM material in a profile, more of a traditional profile than you'd see in a, in an older building. The fourth floor is done in the ACM or aluminum composite material mansard roof. So this, this roof actually at the corner line starts to work its way backwards on the slope. We do have six bay projections that are shared amongst the units on that floor. Step back because this is a two-dimensional elevation or two-dimensional rendering. You can see the top of the fifth floor. Again, there will be outdoor spaces in the front fifteen-foot setback as previously had mentioned. Just going back to the Palisades Avenue elevation, which is on the lower left-hand corner, we are proposing the curb cut and a fourteen-foot wide garage door at Palisades Avenue. Again, lower portion of the building is in brick. As you can see, the building tears back between fourth and fifth floors. The side elevations that are exposed, we are proposing a cement panel siding. And at the rear facade, mostly glazed. We are proposing at the upper four floors, those cantilever balconies with glass railings. In the lower portion facing the parking lot of the care point, we have a brick masonry in pattern to match the building style. At both the rear and the lower elevations, both north and south, and again, in the front facing west, we have a module brick masonry. One of the very good and positive points about this building is it is north of the three-story mixture structure. This building casts no shadows on other than the care point commercial building, which is directly to our north. We have a substantial right-of-way, which is Palisades Avenue to the west. And again, we have a parking lot to the east that we have no impact on. So again, in closing, we have a three-story masonry building with a fourth story, which is the mansard. Again, you know, we like to think that in a contemporary way, we, we, we kind of, we've thought about the context of this building in color and in style. And we think this is a very nice project and a positive for the neighborhood. And that's all.
So my, my next witness will be Mr. Burton. I'm, I'm assuming it will wait until all witnesses have testified before questions or, or would you like to ask questions now?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Harrington. I, I think that we'll stick with, stick with that usual mode of going through all the experts and yeah, thank you.
Okay. So then I'm going to proceed with Mr. Burton. You're muted, Calisto.
Hi, Calisto. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
It's Calisto Burton, C.A.L.I.S.T.O. Burton, B.E.R.T.I.N.
Thank you.
And I can represent Mr. Burton has been qualified before this board and the planning board on numerous occasions as an expert in civil engineering and traffic engineering and I'd offer him the same tonight unless you want to hear from, here's qualifications.
No, if Mr. Burton could just verify that his PE license in the state of New Jersey is current.
Actually, it was renewed today.
Oh, beautiful timing. You may proceed.
It got lost in the mail and so we had to check on it. So, but it was renewed today.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
That would have been trouble.
Proceed.
Okay. Anthony, maybe since you have the better-looking slides than I, why don't you put up your site plan? Or maybe it's Z seven. Or the site plan. Everyone is first, yeah. Okay, as, as Anthony described, I'm not going to repeat anything. He said we will be renovating the entire site. The site is currently one hundred percent paved. The building's already been taken down. We will be replacing all the sidewalks along the frontage, putting in new trees. We will also be repaving the street in front of us from curb to curb. And we got a review letter from engineering asking us to extend the repaving to include the entire intersection and, and we will do that. I just want to talk a little bit about parking, Anthony, discuss that. If we were, you know, a conforming office building in the zone, we would only require one space for five thousand square feet. It's a twenty thousand square foot building. We'd only require five parking spaces. But using the residential standards, where a one-bedroom gets, is required to have a half a parking space and a two-bedroom is two parking spaces, looking at that calculation, it comes up to twelve parking spaces. So as he mentioned, we have twenty-three parking spaces. Nineteen parking spaces will be in the back, in the, on the top of the drawing. That's a racking system, a mechanical parking system. And then we have four parking spaces in the front. We note on this plan, two of them being handicap, we're only required to have one handicap parking space. So unless we have a resident that requires a handicap parking space, we will only have one. This leaves the other parking space open to more customers or visitors. One other thing we plan to do is that the doctor's office would generally be closed six o'clock, five o'clock, something like that. That at certain hours after the medical offices are closed, those four parking spaces would be available to the residents. So we would have a shared parking concept. So visitors who would normally have to park on the street could make arrangements with the tenants and actually park inside the building. And one thing else I wanted to stress is that the garage door during business hours will be left open. This will, we don't have to wait for someone to stand on the street for the garage door to open. It will be open and allowed in. So we, we were very cognizant of parking, even though we're not required to have a lot of parking. We wanted to make sure we had sufficient parking. We will be installing a stormwater detention system. Once the, the building or part of the, the building covers the entire property, so we will be covering, collecting all roof water, which is in this part of the state considered clean. We have a detention system under the garage consisting of several large thirty-six inch diameter pipes. The water is collected in those pipes and metered out through a small hole and goes into the street drainage system. The requirement in Jersey City is that we reduce the rate of runoff for a two-year storm by fifty percent. We reduce the ten-year storm by twenty-five percent and the hundred-year storm by twenty percent. We do reduce all those. We meet, actually, we exceed those criteria for each of the storm. Someone asked me what the size of this detention system and the pipes hold about four thousand gallons of water. So again, the water goes in and is metered out. So we are reducing the rate at which water runs off the site. Utilities are all in the street and we will collect them there. And looking at traffic. We did obtain traffic counts from the Department of Transportation, just a little bit north of, of the site on Palisade Avenue. And what happens is we have about four hundred and fifty cars heading south. And this is in the peak hour, heading south in the morning, four hundred heading north in the morning and in the evening, the flow is reversed. So we, we have between four hundred and four hundred and eighty cars in each direction, which is a substantial amount during rush hour and during off-peak hours, the traffic is, is reduced. There is a bus stop right in front of the site, but we did not, in looking at our traffic trip generation, we did not take transit into account. We'll just assume that it was like a suburban building. So we would have about fifteen trips in the morning. That's say eight leaving and seven coming back because we do have the medical office normally. And if it was just residential, they'd be leaving in the morning and then coming back in the afternoon. But the residential, I mean, the, the office has, is a different traffic flow. So fifteen trips, again, we have eight leaving and seven coming in the morning. And in the evening, it's, it's nineteen, I mean eighteen trips. So about nine and nine cars coming in and out during a peak hour. Now, the site is next to the intersection and maybe if we could just go to the existing conditions plan, I think that showed the intersection best. Or even that, yeah. Okay, so so we, we have the street right in front of us. That's Jefferson. Jefferson travels one way south away from Palisade Street. So the building with the red awning in front is a drugstore with the residential units above and then we're just next to it, just north. So right now, our driveway is in the middle of the site. And looking at this, we actually redesigned the project a little while ago and we moved the driveway to the north end where the where, where the number two is, two sixteen. So we moved the driveway as far away as from the intersection as we could.
Calisto, I'm sorry, if I could interrupt you for everybody's benefit. The white building shown on that photograph is now gone and that's part of the property, correct?
That's correct. So the driveway will be roughly in front of that building. Right? So we did that to keep it as far away from the intersection as possible. We also plan, it's shown on the, on the civil drawings to say no, no left turn out of the driveway, just because. Very good. Thank you. So now we're looking at the interior floor plan, right? Yeah, see, it's, there's a sign that says stop and no left turn. We, I'm going to do a little caveat to that. I think that's important during the peak hours, but the off-peak hours, it, it may not be so important. I think we, we heard some concerns about traffic safety in the area. One thing, I, I, on all the streets that the T intersections on, at Palisades, is there's really no parking permitted in front of our building or in front of the drugstore next door, yet cars regularly park there. And on several of the intersections up and down Palisade Avenue. So if the cars weren't there, it would be much, much clearer visibility. But they park there. So we're offering to restrict traffic to right turns out of our driveway. When we add our traffic to the street traffic and we do a level of service analysis, the driveways act, act very, very well. It's A or B, which means there's like at worst case, maybe a ten-second delay for a a motorist leaving the site to enter onto Palisade Avenue. And, and again, we are making all right turns out of the site. We did one other thing because a concern was raised about traffic safety. We did contact engineering. We asked them if they had any, any goals or desires for this intersection. There weren't, really weren't anything planned. We did request an accident study and we got little over two years, two years and two months worth of accident data. It was for the whole stretch, but we, we narrowed it down to this intersection of Jefferson and, and Palisade. In this two-and-a-half-year period, there were nine accidents. Six of those accidents were just involving motor vehicles with no injuries. There was one accident that involved a pedestrian. One accident with the Uber Eats bicycle. Going back to the prior application. And then there was someone on a scooter driving at two AM that hit a pothole and had an accident. So I, I, I don't really count that one. Anyway, the worst was five accidents during a, a one-year period. Again, I think, again, there was only one with pedestrians. They, they did not give us a lot of data, so I don't know when that happened. I would think that the cars parking along the curb line in front of the drugstore in front of this site might have had something to do with the pedestrian accident. One thing, we also did a warrant analysis to see if a traffic light or any kind of traffic devices would be warranted here. The state of New Jersey, well, it's a national standard for installing a traffic light. Well, we want traffic lights. We don't want traffic lights where we don't have the criteria to install a traffic light. So there's several warrants. One is has deals with the amount of pedestrians. One deals with the number of accidents and one deals with the amount of traffic. But as I said, the secondary street, which is Jefferson, travels away from the intersection. So there's no real vehicles coming into the intersection. So there's no justification for a, a traffic signal at this intersection. But we could recommend something like a crosswalk. Sometimes you'll see a cone. But we could recommend something like a crosswalk. Sometimes you'll see a cone placed at the center of the road, says yield to pedestrians. When motorists are driving on a road that does have crosswalks, because there is a crosswalk here, they don't always, can't always see a pedestrian. And sometimes a pedestrian has to take a couple steps out into the road, so a motorist actually recognizes that someone wants to cross the road and slows down and stops them. But sometimes putting a cone out there, yield to pedestrians does does help in that in that regard. So other than the no-left turn and the pedestrian crosswalk, we don't have any other recommendations. And from a traffic standpoint, we feel the site will operate safely, safely. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. So at this time, I'll move on with Mr. Height to address the requested variances, and then we'll open it up to questions.
That sounds good.
Hi, Charles.
Hi, good evening.
You, where'd you go?
Right here.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And just state and spell your name?
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H E Y D T.
Thank you.
And Mr. Height has been qualified numerous times before this board, so I'd ask that he be accepted as an expert in planning again.
Yes, yes, he he will be. And if he would just validate that his license is up to date and current.
It is. I too have also renewed for another two-year period, so it is in good standing.
Thank you. You proceed.
Great, Charles, take it away.
Yes, so there are there are a few aspects relating to planning that we'll get into for for this application. First and foremost, we need to use variance. In the M District, residential units are not permitted. As market rate units, there's a few other types of residential that is permitted, so we'll get into that. But as market rate unit, affordable units, it's not permitted. This building is actually not just residential, as we've heard. It is a mixed-use structure. So again, that's really the relief we are being, we are seeking is for a mixed-use structure, mixed use in the M District. We are also referencing a building coverage. In the M District, buildings are permitted to be eighty percent lot, eighty percent coverage as well as a lot coverage. As we saw from from the plans on the ground floor, we are proposing a building coverage of a hundred percent on the ground floor, but it would comply on the floors above. So in in effort to be conservative, we are going to reference a a building coverage variance. So again, as as was detailed earlier by Mr. Vandemark at the top of the screen, unfortunately, the predominant land use in this neighborhood is is a surface parking lot. It for the Care One facility actually wraps around many of these mixed use and and medical use offices to the east at the at the top of the Palisades. So I think Anthony was trying to pull that up. So that is the predominant land use. Along Palisade Avenue, when we did our site visits and then looked at some of the types of uses, there is a mix. There is a heavy concentration of of medical offices that's that's given the zoning it's in. But there are also a mix of other uses. One example being immediately south is another mixed-use building. It has the ground floor pharmacy as well as six units above. In that cluster right there, there's a mix of medical offices as well as single-family homes. So you do have a mix of not only just medical, but mixed-use medical and residential, and also just standalone residential uses in this area. As you work your way further west, you can see on the side streets, Jefferson, it's it leaves the M District and is more residential in nature. So part of the intent here with this application is to still remain true to the M District, and that's proposing the two thousand two hundred square foot medical office. I I think that was always part of the vision to provide some aspect of medical office for this development. That would be certainly consistent with the overall mix of uses in this area. And it certainly wouldn't be an impairment, because there's a healthy existence of medical offices in this stretch. So I'll get into that a little later, but that was part of the vision. And and obviously, we are proposing market rate units. We are also incorporating affordable units, which is a a benefit to the to the general public in terms of affordability. So that's the composition of the uses. I think it's it's clear as to the floor plans and and what's being proposed in terms of development of the of the property. As I mentioned, we are consistent with the mix of uses in the area. I think that's one of the first and foremost positive aspects about this application in terms of establishing particular suitability. The property, the size of the property is six thousand six hundred and forty square feet. So that's the typical six thousand square feet minimum to contemplate mixed use and multifamily uses. So from a square footage size, it is substantially suitable to accommodate a mixed-use building. And the main reason is because we need a sufficient amount of space on the ground floor to accommodate parking, which we just heard from both Mr. Vandemark and Mr. Burton, that we do achieve the necessary off-street parking that is what we believe is appropriate for the proposed twenty units as well as the the medical office use. As we heard, the the arrangement will be the stacked parking for the residences as well as four parking spaces in the front portion of the parking area. One thing I did want to mention that we were keen on is that we did design a turnaround in top, inside the building. I think that was one aspect that was brought up in terms of reducing the potential for any vehicles having to back out onto the street along Palisades. So that was something in that we were able to accommodate on the ground floor. It just, again, it furthers the establishment that that there is sufficient space on the ground floor to accommodate parking and also provide sufficient number of spaces for for the proposed units. When you move up to the residential portions and and that second floor with the medical office, the the building actually scales down, so it it's not one hundred percent lock covered at the ground floor. It actually scales down to be eighty percent in that that fifth floor is even less than that with the front front setback or step back for the fifth floor. So again, that's really just establishing that the building mass is in keeping with the provisions of the M District. Another testament to this trying to balance an appropriate development, given that we're we're in a zone that's not permitted, the mixed use. In terms of of density, we did do a density analysis. There are predominant use in this area is medical office, medical office. So the properties that we did establish as being just residential or primary residential did have a range of approximately eighty-seven units, which is the immediate immediate building to the south, the six-unit building, all the way up to a hundred and thirty-three units. And that's an apartment building that's a little further north on Palisade Avenue, near the intersection of just confirming it with Prospect Street, and and it's directly across from Reservoir Avenue, so it's about a thousand feet north. What's being proposed tonight in terms of density is a hundred and thirteen units per acre. So that's the seventeen market rate units over the overall property yields a hundred and thirteen. We are also proposing three affordable units, so when you factor that in, it does increase slightly up to a hundred and thirty. But again, that's within that range of the other mixed-use, multifamily uses that we found. There's not an overwhelmingly large number of uses, given that we're in the M District, but they are existing and we are within that range of density. As was noted by Mr. Burton, we did, we did look at some of the transit in the area. I I think, to be honest with you, probably the predominant mode beyond personal vehicles is is walking or bicycling. This area is has a nice mix of uses, and we are trying to add to that. We are promoting a lower density or or a lower number of parking to try and balance the impacts of additional residential units with providing some sort of off-street parking to not flood any sort of the availability of on-street parking. But but we do believe that that's the right right balance for this property. There is a city city bike location near Oakland and Jefferson, and then a little further north is the a hundred steps down to the Second Street Light Rail Station. So that's about a ten-to-fifty-minute walk. But that's that's additional transit in the area. With respect to larger planning efforts, we do want to advance the goals of the land use law in the state. So first and foremost, I do think that this would be, an approval by this board would be approving an appropriate use and development for this property that does promote the general welfare. This is a very balanced infill development. The prior structure did have a predominantly large surface parking area with a small building footprint. That's what what I would term as a very inefficient use of land. So given the context here, I think that what's being proposed is an appropriate use of the property. I do also believe we're establishing appropriate population densities. Again, I just went through some of the densities in the area. A lot of the master planning speaks to a balance of housing supply, a mix of housing supply in appropriate locations. I think that we're trying to achieve that vision here. So that that was purpose E to promote an establishment of appropriate population densities. With purpose I, it's it's deals with aesthetics of a building or or an environment, so it's to promote a more desirable visual environment. I believe that we're doing a number of of improvements. First and foremost, we're transitioning, as I said, a predominantly surface parking lot into a full building that will occupy the full frontage of the streetscape. We heard from Mr. Vandemark as to the design intent, incorporating some of the older mansard styled roofs with some of a modern take with the modern brick along the streetscape. We are also making a couple improvements along the streetscape. We're proposing two new street trees where none are provided today. We are also proposing bicycle, outdoor bicycle stations along the street, so that will be an improvement as well. I believe that's the main positive criteria that that I wanted to touch on. With respect to the negative components, we did take care after meeting with the the neighborhood association to make some adjustments where we could. So in terms of substantial detriment to the general welfare, first and foremost, I I don't believe the proposed mixed use will be a substantial detriment. I think it's very sitting and consistent with the uses in the area. The proposed parking, there were a few adjustments that we did make. One, we did shift that curb cut a little further north away from the immediate intersection. So I do think that we were able to achieve that by reworking the internal parking access and and help distance the proposed curb cut further from the crosswalks. There is a current curb cut that serves this property, so there's no net decrease in on-street parking. It's really just a shift in that parking space. We are also implementing several safety features, not only shifting the the curb cut, but we have audio and visual safety features for any pedestrians walking along the streetscape. That was implemented with with this project as well. And in effort to not have queuing, and I I know Mr. Burton touched on this, but in effort to not have queuing during the day for any patients who are being dropped off, the garage door will remain open. And there obviously will be surveillance in that area, so that that will that will help vehicles not have to park within the sidewalk along the streetscape. I think that was another aspect that we are able to accommodate. In terms of providing an affordable mixture, again, this is voluntary affordable housing that we're committing. The requirement, if we were to apply with this application today, would be ten percent in this area. We are proposing fifteen. So that is above beyond what would be what would be required. It's it's an additional unit of of affordable housing, which which will actually be a benefit to the general welfare. Again, we're trying to maintain the building mass. This this the M District actually permit the building structure of ten stories. We are not proposing ten stories. Five stories is more fitting. There are taller structures, taller five-story structures in the area. So we, I do believe we're consistent with that, and that's providing like sufficient light and air. Really, the only impact is on the the parking lot and the roof of the building to the north, as was mentioned by Mr. Vandemark in the shadow study. So I don't believe there's any impacts to light and air or open space for with respect to the proposed building. The the last component that I wanted to address is any impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. So we are in the M District. We are trying to balance the M District's purpose with a medical office. We are also consistent with other types of uses that are permitted in the M District. So if we were an assisted living residence, a nursing home, a senior housing, those are all permitted residential uses in the M District. So I think that that's consistent with the intent of balancing residential uses within this district. Also, one of the things that we really thought from the get-go is is housing for all these medical-related offices. Staff housing is actually a permitted accessory use. And I think that's really what the intent here is to provide for an alternate living, an apartment-style living within this M District. So again, those are those are permitted uses, as I just referenced from the M District, albeit we are a mixed-use building. I don't, I I think we're still predominantly consistent with the intent there. With respect to the zone plan, the the master plan does speak to enhancing residential neighborhoods and creating a balance of housing supply that meets all current and future citizens. Again, that's what we're trying to do with here, trying to find the right balance with the proposed twenty units as well as the medical office space on a suitable lot. The latest master plan, the the latest land use element does have what I would call a local vision for this this neighborhood, the Lower Heights neighborhood. There are three things that I just wanted to reference from that, those vision goals for this neighborhood. One is to, for the local environment, to beautify streets, especially by adding and maintaining new street trees, protecting old growth trees and greening front setback areas. So we are aiming to do that. There are no street trees currently on the property. We are proposing two street trees. In terms of development standards, there are two other requirements. Focus higher intensity development up to five stories on north-south corridors. Palisade Avenue clearly is a north-south corridor. It is a more intense corridor. What we're proposing is consistent, given that we're a five-story structure, and and again, we're trying to mitigate that fifth story by having a a building step back at that level. So again, that's that's the intent is having that higher intensity along a north-south corridor. And lastly, establish development regulations that encourage affordable housing. So again, we were an application that was submitted prior to the city establishing the affordable housing, inclusionary zoning ordinance. But we wanted to make this board well aware that we're we're trying to provide for the greatest general welfare, the the benefit to the public, and incorporating those three affordable units is is certainly in keeping with the intent of the I Z O and also the master plan. That's my direct testimony I have. There's probably other notes, but I think that's covered most of the bulk of of my testimony, so be happy to answer any questions.
And that completes our presentation. So just open it up to the board. Ask any questions?
Yeah, I am thinking, as with the other applications, that it might make more sense for us to hear from the the public first, so then we can focus our questions accordingly. So 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 Lindsay, can you I'm saying Lindsay, but can can we check and see if there are any public comments? A reminder, sorry, Francisco. A a reminder that we respectfully request that each member of of the public limit their questions and comments to a period of three minutes and Commissioner Green has helped out by being an excellent timekeeper. So we can proceed with this.
I see one hand. I am promoting Bart Warshaw.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state and spell your full name and provide your address?
Yes, my name is Bart Warshaw, B A R T W A R S H A W, and my address is ninety-seven Palisade.
Thank you.
I'd like to just quickly, before I start making any comments, just mention that I I have been, I'm not sure who else is on the call, but I I've been given permission by Subfruki and Teresa Constantino, who are the owner of the pharmacy next door to this site and two oh two Palisade. I've been asked by to give testimony, not testimony for them, but to give their opinions. And I'm also the the president of the Sergeant Anthony Park Neighborhood Association. So I so I have been president for five years, five or six years for this neighborhood association. We've had a number of objections to this site, and I'm respectfully asking for more than three minutes to cover what I think is a quite significant number of objections we have. And I hope that the board could allow me that time. I hope I don't want to take more than three minutes, but I I'm expecting I might. So I'm going to ask that request.
In 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 this case, and since you are speaking on behalf of the neighborhood association and that you you are present, we will grant you this exception.
I'll try and keep it as brief as possible.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. So as as the board knows, as Mr. Harrison stated, Mr. Hake stated, this is this is a medical zone specifically marked for medical buildings. So as they also stated, this is not senior housing. This is not assisted living. This is market value residential units, twenty of them. This is highly coveted land, actually. This has got a city view, obviously. And approving, and what we believe is approving this development would be a significant precedent for this area, like significant. We we in effect, it's a zoning by variance situation. Just last year, we, as Mr. Hake stated, we had a small vision study that was asked by the planning department and is part of the the master plan. And and from what we understand, it was adopted quite wholeheartedly by Jersey City Planning. And that was just just six months ago. On this master plan, there is a medical portion of this where where exactly in this area, and it suggests that this area should remain R one or R two zone. I don't know, and and that that should be looked at by planning in future. This is an important aspect because all of the surrounding houses are R one. There isn't a single you know, this is our one zone. There's three three stories, one or two families. On on this site, there would normally, you would normally see two houses. And essentially, that would be one to two family units on each of these houses. What the what the developers are proposing is twenty units, not not two houses. And so this is quite a significant jump from what is what would normally maybe be seen on this site. So we don't, we don't necessarily see this site as as irregular or unique. There are many, many double wide lots throughout the city that that people want to build on, and they they do so within the zoning laws. Even if this were raised from R one to R two D, which was a higher proposal that the small vision study that the Jersey City Planning organized and and adopted, that was that would have a maximum of ten units from what we understand. So again, this is this designer is trying to include twenty units. The medical office is relatively irrelevant because because the twenty units is really the predominant scope of the building. The we understand that the need for low-income housing is very important in this in this city and and also in the neighborhood. Unfortunately, we we think that really just the one low-income unit is is nowhere near the justification for the scale of variance, twenty units. And as you, as the board knows, this this is a use variance that that's being asked for. What actually that means is that that every every variance in in which would normally be an R one zone would be is being asked for. So it's five, it's five stories where on R one we ask would be requiring three. The proposal is hundred percent lock coverage and no other building on the entire stretch of our neighborhood in Palisade has a hundred percent lock lock coverage. The there is no predominant setback followed that is required for R one and R two. And as the as the as the as the presenter said, this site has been raised. So even though, even though there was, it was previously paved, it is now no longer paved. And so I'm not quite sure why we are, we are having a standard of paved versus not paved when when they want to try and try and enforce their hundred percent lock coverage rule. They, the the presentation included the suggestion of a rainwater detention system. I think that's admirable. But the reality is unfortunately, that rainwater detention system still goes straight into this Jersey City sewers. There's no, I mean, it might have a slow release, but it still goes straight into the sewers. So those are our planning objections. I want to just address a couple of design objections. So
Okay, and and we we will ask that you just try to see
I will It's very important. Yeah, I I've got, I've got two, two areas of concern, design objections and traffic, traffic and parking objections. I I will try and wrap them up very quickly, but both are very important. The design includes bedrooms, which have incredibly sparse access to light. They have light wells and three or four stories down into bedrooms. Essentially, the bedrooms have no access to light. So that's an important point. And the design also includes mechanical parking spaces like those you see in New York City commercial lots. I don't understand how thank you. Who operates the mechanical parking and how those cars get in and out? If if only if they're all mechanical parking spaces, surely only five of those those cars will A B will be moving in and out of that garage at a time. I'm just just going through my notes. Yes, I just just following on from their 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 presentation, this drop-off zone for patients inside the building and having the the garage open throughout the day, that seems a very strange operation of any kind of garage that I've ever seen in in a in a residential area. But one of the questions about the mechanical parking, I'd like, I'd like for the the designers to answer is what happens at night? Is the mechanical parking like disabled? There's a lot of noise in these mechanics, from what I understand about this mechanical parking. And then also the the new introduction of this this noise alarm every time a car comes in and out of the building, is that going to affect residents of the building? I'm just going to move on to the traffic and parking issues because these are actually quite significant. I want, I want everybody to understand them. And so this twenty twenty units in this area, however much, however much they don't want the the how much you, however you put it, that will increase the number of cars that use this this that park in in this area and use this area. The junction of Palisade and Jefferson has, as your, as your the traffic expert here stated, had nine accidents in the past two years. That is significant. This is incredibly dangerous junction. We had one person killed in twenty twenty. And we've had three people hit in the past six months. This is not a an area to be taken lightly. There is a bus stop on both sides of the street. And there's double parking that already exists and and causes this area to be dangerous. And I think I think what you've seen is a presentation that that understands how dangerous this is. But it doesn't, it doesn't actually address any of the dangers. The the right turn is, it sounds like it's almost optional if really, if anybody wants to use it. But but it's clearly a dangerous area, and that is why they've had to introduce some of these potentially set like some of the safety issues that they're they're introducing.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah, I will, I promise. Okay, so there's two more comments. Two more comments. One is, one is that the the owner of the pharmacy next door, he has windows at his, on the side of his building that will be entirely blocked by this new design. And he is very upset about that. He was also promised access to his rear yard for parking by the developers, he says, and that has not been, that has not amounted. And I'm just trying to think. Yeah, okay, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna just just put like put a stop to that. Yeah, I think this is a design that actually will be detrimental to the neighborhood and I and I appreciate your time. Thank you for hearing me out.
Very good. Okay. Any other further comments from the public?
Yes, so there are, one second. There are four hands raised. The next hand is Alicia Rogers. I'm promoting.
Okay.
Hi.
Oh, I'm looking for Alicia. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you can state and spell your full name and provide your address, please?
Sure. First name is Tom, T O M. Last name is Demus. That's D as in David, E A M as in Mary, U S as in Sam. And my address is eleven Jefferson Ave, Apartment One, Jersey City, New Jersey, zero seven three zero six.
Thank you.
Okay, so you you can proceed with your testimony or questions.
Sure. And before I get started, I would like to say that my wife, Alicia Rogers, whose laptop I am on, would also like to testify, and she'd also like her own three minutes for when I'm done. So I appreciate that.
That's fine.
You know, going to, we've met with the developers privately, and here we are publicly. And a big part of this is about whether or not this building is a detriment to the neighborhood. I happen to live diagonally across the street from where this site would go up. I'm even one of those little cubes that's in the vignette that has been shown by Mr. Vandemark. You know, I think everything that Bart previously touched upon, and even I think some of the concessions that the traffic engineer had made, I think all ring true, but I want to emphasize all of them. Palisade Avenue is a busy street. It is difficult to walk across that street, let alone, you know, try to imagine that there are going to be potentially twenty additional cars, twenty-three additional cars egressing and regressing out of that driveway on a daily basis. And by their own account, there could be fifteen trips in the morning, eighteen trips in the afternoon. That's more cars. You have a high school in which many kids walk home from, you know, less than a mile away. Three o'clock, it's busy. People are walking past. It does not seem to me as though, you know, the placement of the driveway in any direction is going to account for, you know, the kind of pedestrian traffic that flows up and down that street, our street. You know, back when this started, we had brought up the cars turning left on the Palisade out of the building. There was an unfortunate comment made privately about how this would be self-regulated. But the reality of it is, is that the left turn or the no-left turn sign within the building is really nothing at all. It's not a regulation. It doesn't do anything. There's going to be no one to prevent anyone from making a left turn out of the building. And by, you know, the traffic engineer's own concession, there are illegally parked cars
One minute.
on Palisade Ave. And there's nothing in this plan that's going to change that. And there's nothing about it that's going to, you know, create a, you know, visibility where none exist presently and none will exist in the future. It's hard to fathom that the garage door, it will remain open. And it's hard to imagine that once these condos are sold off, that the homeowners are going to
Thirty seconds.
You know, the K-turning inside the parking, you know, within the parking deck, it just doesn't make a ton of sense. And you know, the final part about this is that, I'll just note that, you know, it seems to me that there are a bunch of different ways to have constructed this building that would be true to the current zone plan for or the zone area that doesn't require use of a medical building or medical office in order to create a five-story building.
Time.
It's a hook, and I think it should be treated as that.
Time.
Thank you very much. And Bridget will also have to swear you when Ms. Rogers.
Can I raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you can state and spell your full name for the record?
Alicia Rogers, A L I C I A R O D G E R S.
And your address?
Eleven Jefferson Ave, Apartment One.
Thank you.
I cross this intersection at least twice a day, every day, and it is scary. I have been almost hit multiple times. I have watched kids try to pass this intersection, going to the bus stop, schools. I've had to see neighbors allow, try to actually help kids cross the street. One of I from the the traffic study, the the documented accidents that happened does not include a little kid that was hit where the cops were not called. I do not understand how you will, in the parking lot, make sure that they're always going to make a right-hand turn. It doesn't seem very possible. I would assume that someone pulling out of that driveway will want to make a left turn going towards the highway, going towards the rest of the city. They didn't want to go into the north. I just don't also understand how the garage will remain open. We also have recently purchased our home here in a new condo association that starts their own rules. What's going to keep that condo association from deciding to close that garage door once they decide that they're not sure who's walking in and out of their garage system? And just going back to that accident, how is five accidents in one year and nine accidents in two years not a big issue? I I that's that's crazy to me. And to add twenty-three more parking spots, not just of people who are living there, so they're going in the morning or out in the evening, but also adding in the whole access to dropping patients in and out and the people who work there. How is that? That doesn't, it seems like a complete chaos within the garage system. How is that not going to spill out into
One minute. One minute.
They keep referring to this as being compared to a nursing home or a senior living association. It is not. There's one unit that is going to be put aside for medical use. One unit on the same floor as two, three other units, they're going to go for hundreds of thousands of dollars. One unit for a medical unit for, to be, get this variance for medical use. I, I, I just cannot believe that this would, this would pass. It is just absurd
Seconds.
that this would pass for one medical unit to have 20 regular market use units. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there are three remaining hands. The next individual is Kareen Nagu, Nagula Pali. So I'm promoting.
All right, are you able to turn your camera microphone on? Hello?
Sorry, yes, hello?
Okay, would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state and spell your full name and provide your address?
Uh, yes, but I don't want it to count towards my three minutes because I have a very long name. But it's a, it's Kiran Nagalapali. It's K I R A N. Uh, last name's Nagalapali, N A G U L A, P as in Paul, A L L I. Uh, I also am a resident of 11 Jefferson Ave in Jersey City, 07306. Apartment three, sorry, different, different one from Tom, Alicia.
Okay, you can proceed.
All right, thank you so much. You know, something the attorney said in the very beginning of this really kind of triggered me and rubbed me the wrong way. And, and it had been re-characterized a few times by the presenting party. They said this, this area, this building, this lot is surrounded by a parking field. It's not, surrounded by our neighborhood. I, I cross that street every day with my son to welcome to daycare. And as Alicia was just mentioning, that is a busy intersection. It, it is the main road that connects the Holland and Lincoln tunnels. I think everyone needs to take that into consideration and really understand how much traffic cuts through that intersection on a daily basis. Now they're adding, as everyone says, 20 some cars and probably closer to between 20 and 40 residents in here. There is nothing like this in this neighborhood. What they pointed to, they, every building next to them that actually has, it is, is, is one residential. And it's going to be at most six, six units, uh, which they have even admitted, right? They point to one building with 120 units. That's Bel, uh, I think it's Belvedere Court, which is a hundred year, maybe multiple hundreds of year old building. It has no cars egressing and ingressing. And it's actually only four stories, not five, right? So it, you know, their, their arguments have several flaws. You know, Tom said it. They, this is, this whole thing's a hook, right? They're trying to have their cake and eat it too. This is a, this is an M-zone for medical, for medical use, right? What they're trying to do, and the, the, the neighboring zones are R1 zones that have height restrictions of three, of three, three stories. So what they're trying to do is go to a zone, build a, build a building in a zone with no height restrictions, but essentially make it a residential building that would fit
One minute.
that is meant for any of all the other zones in Jersey City. And it is going to cause a number of issues. Well, something I just, I do want to touch on very quickly is they're parking for this, this, this medical building, right? Four spots for patients, right? What about the people who work there? Where are they going to park? So that means the patients probably aren't going to park there. And so what's, what's going to happen next? What about if they have more than four patients in at the same time along with people that, that work there? They're going to end up pulling up on the street. And you know what's right there? You know what's right there is a bus stop. There's bus stops on both sides and nothing's going to stop these people from coming in and out and getting blocked, blocked from that. It's going to cause more accidents. You know, I, I think it's pretty unfortunate that they had all the time in the world to talk and we did not. So that's all.
Thank you very much.
Promoting Karen Weisman.
Hi Karen, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Is your mic on? Can I hear you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, I have my work background still on.
Okay, no, that's, I just didn't hear you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state and spell your full name and provide your address?
Sure, it's Kern, K E R N, last name Weisman, W E I S S M A N. And the address is 576 Palisade Avenue.
Thank you.
And just before we put Mr. Weisman on, on the clock, I think it's wise for me to just announce that it's, it's 9:53. So this will definitely be the last application that we'll hear this evening. So any other applications are going to need to be carried accordingly. Okay? All right. All right, Mr. Weisman, you can proceed. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. I, I appreciate it. So Kern Weisman, I'm on the, I'm no longer on the board of the Rivian Association, but I am the Chair of the Development Committee for the association. I'm speaking here in support of the Sergeant Anthony Association, which is our sister organization to the south of us. Our, our Palisade Avenue section is within the R2D zone, which, which allows for 75 units per acre. And they're obviously asking for 113. So that's definitely out of, you know, and this, this zone is not that old. So clearly planning is indicating what they think the, the zoning density should be for Palisade Ave. And this way, way exceeds that. So this was, our zone was passed in 2018. And I just, my main point, I'm not going to repeat what other people said, but I'm just going to make this one really important point. Because these kind of things can set precedent for the entire, you know, heights, you know, in our neighborhood as well. You know, this is, in my opinion, the very definition of zoning by variance. I mean, zoning by, by variance has been held to be illegal in New Jersey by the courts numerous times. And this is, in my opinion, exactly what they were talking about when they talked about zoning by variance. Well, you take a zone that currently is medical and you say, well, I kind of want to make money and I don't really want to run a medical facility. So I'm going to throw a medical unit in there. I'm going to make it a more, you know, you know, mixed use. And I'm going to throw 20 units, give a couple token, only one, you know, low income. Not even the three are not even all low income for affordability. And we're just going to, you know, go with that and, and basically try to get a complete zoning approved that has nothing to do with the use
A minute.
allowed in that zone. And what I would like to say is that if what should happen here is the new master plan was passed and planning should work with the neighborhood and work with Sergeant Anthony's and work with all the neighbors here and pass the appropriate zoning with any overlays that are needed. And then development should comply with that. But right now it's a medical zone and it needs to comply with that and not be zoned by variance because our developer
Thirty seconds.
Okay, so that, that's, that's my firm opinion. And I really hope that the board denies this application and does not set a dangerous precedent, precedent here. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more Henrys. I'm promoting F. Oshinsky.
Hi.
Hello, would you raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state, spell your name and provide your address?
Sure, it's Ephrem, E F R E M, Oshinsky, O S H I N S K Y. And I live at 21 Beacon Avenue. So you've heard from Karen and Bart and Tom that the plan is to build a massive residential building and medical zone as kind of a fig leaf with 20 units where there used to be a two-family house and hardly anything allotted for income or affordable housing. And they mentioned that it's on a very busy street. So I just want to take a minute to talk about how busy is this street? So as Karen mentioned, you've got the Holland Tunnel to Lincoln Tunnel traffic. You've got the 123
I'm sorry, could you slow down? You're talking too fast.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get everything into the three minutes.
I know, but I want to hear it and take it down.
No problem. You got it. So you've got the 123, you've got the 86, you've got the 84 and the jitney buses and the Holland Tunnel, Lincoln Tunnel traffic that Karen, Karen mentioned. So on the average day, the 84 comes once every seven minutes or so. The 123 is every half hour. The 86 is about every hour. So that's a bus just in one direction every five minutes at least, not counting the jitneys. And that's not peak hours. That's the middle of the afternoon, one direction. Now this plan wants to put a driveway in the middle of that that empties out onto that bus lane with no traffic light or stop sign or anything on a street where three people have been hit just recently and where a woman was hit and killed in 2020. The nearest traffic light on
You're going to have to slow down. You're talking too fast.
Sorry, I'm trying to get it all in.
I know, but I can't, I want it on the record and I can't take that down.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Right, you're typing everything. I'm so sorry. The nearest traffic light on one side, I think, is five blocks away. The nearest one on the other is also several blocks away. I live on Beacon Ave. I walk along that street several times a day. I took the bus into the city back when people did such a thing. I've been on buses that have crashed into cars on that street, turning right onto Jefferson because it is such a pinch point. You can, sorry, I'll slow down. It creates a dangerous situation every 30 minutes. And the ironic thing is that you can see this in their own slide with the car creating a blind spot in that bus lane. I think that's slide 15. Right now, that stretch of land is the only unbroken, safe stretch of sidewalk. You can walk along on Palisade Avenue without keeping your head on its level. It's kind of nice. We, as Tommy said, we asked the architect about this issue at a neighborhood association meeting. He said it would be a self-regulating intersection, which just sounds irresponsible to me. Laughably irresponsibly irresponsible, especially when you're proposing to add 23 cars plus all of the people being dropped off for that medical office, right? And, and that's another thing, I don't understand this medical office. If there's no street parking, uh, thank you. Where are people going to park? But also where are they going to get dropped off? They suggested a drop-off area when we spoke to them at the Neighborhood Association meeting, but there's a bus lane there. I, I just don't understand how they can, can use this clever fiction of building a medical office when it's really a huge residential building with the barest minimum of low income and affordable housing to benefit this neighborhood or the people who live here. It's just kind of a cash grab. That'll make the quality of life here worse.
Thirty seconds.
Everything, thank you. Every step of the way just shows a willful ignorance of the area and in this intersection specifically, its needs, its traffic issues. And I'm sorry, but one last thing, there was a tree on that lot. It was right in front of the house before you raised the house. So don't say that you're adding trees. You're adding one tree, not two. Come on. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is one more hand. I am promoting, or sorry, Amely.
Amy, are you out there? Can you put your camera on?
Oh, they're declining to be promoted. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Uh, okay, they're joining. Amely.
Okay. Okay.
Raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name and provide your address?
Allison Lee, A L L I S O N, Lee, L E E. I live at 54 Borum Avenue.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a neighbor that walks past this lot multiple times on a daily basis, walking the dog, what have you. I, my overall feeling about this is that it's zoning by variance. I feel it's important that you turn it down simply on those merits. But I'm really curious about this idea of the garage being open all the time as a single woman walking back and forth regularly. That terrifies me because of the random open garage, which you say is going to be monitored. I don't know by whom. And then the traffic going in and out. I, I, I just, I know, as everyone who's spoken already, the area, the way that the traffic goes in that area, the way that people are traveling, that it's just going to be mayhem, zooming in and out of an open garage with no stops that would be provided by a garage door. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Maybe we're past that point, but I, I really don't, it seems like it's kind of being made up just to get it in there. This concept of, well, maybe it'll be office parking, maybe it'll be, you know, the, the tenants will park at night, but the people going to the office will park during the day. I, I don't know how that's supposed to work out, especially if people working from home. That's two cars there at once. It sounds very loosey-goosey. I think that it's, anything regarding the garage and parking is an afterthought. And the primary purpose of any of this is to shove as many units onto the lot as possible. It's too dense, zoning by variance. That's basically it, unless anybody wants to speak to this mishmash of a garage situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I don't see any hands raised anymore.
Very good. So then we will be closing the public comments. So thank you. So now let's go back to the board and open up questions for the board. Well, I can certainly tee things off a little bit. First, I have a question for Mr. Vandermark about the, the fifth floor story. You testified that neighbors wouldn't be able to see the fifth floor. I want you to give me a better explanation of which neighbors and at exactly what point do you not see the fifth floor?
Yes, Chair, if you can take a look at this rendering. Again, and, and this is taken back across the intersection of Jefferson Ave and Palisades Ave. You know, both from the southern perspective and the direct view, you will not be able to see this that the fifth floor actually. When you work further north, you know, because of the setback in the one-story commercial structure, you're going to be able to see the top floor from the side elevation, you know, on the north side, because it is setback 15 feet. But again, though, your eye level is going to be able to actually cross over the adjacent property and actually see the roof. So, you know, it, it, it disappears in perspective to the south and perspective directly straight on. But as you work north, you're going to be able to see the top floor, obviously, because there's really, there's nothing on the northern side of this building.
Cold?
Okay. I, okay, and then I have some questions for Mr. Height. Mr. Height, what, what is the purpose of a medical zone area?
Well, I, I think the honest reason is the Carepoint Hospital is a main hub here. So I think creating a zoning district around that, being able to foster some related uses to supplement the, the hospital. That, that hospital, as I mentioned earlier, and I, I know some of the comments, heard what we said, it just didn't translate exactly correctly. The, the parking lot is by square footage, the largest land use. And that parking lot serves the hospital, which is the main predominant user in this neighborhood. They have the hospital a little further south and then the office building directly north. So the medical district was born out of the existence of that hospital, many of the medical offices that you traditionally find. Traditionally find within the vicinity of a hospital. So that's really the kind of evolution of what I understand this medical district to be. Really centered around that, the hospital, the price hospital. To answer your question, so. Again, as I said before, the idea here is to, again, supplement the hospital, supplement the medical. Uses in the neighborhood with a variety, a different variety of housing. Our thought all along was that. Hospital workers. Doc, younger doctors will be able to find this location appealing. Because it's within their neighborhood, very walkable to any one of the medical offices or the hospital. And whatnot, so that's the connection.
But, but, but part of the application isn't dedicated staff housing, is it?
No, and I don't.
Right, this is, this is.
Staff housing, in my experience, so I think it's an antiquated, like. Worker housing is just an antiquated concept, it just doesn't happen anymore.
It does exist in some places, but, but, but you actually use the words dedicated staff housing in. Your testimony says a little, but you were referring to permitted uses.
Yes, staff housing is the term, yes.
Yeah, okay. And also, I think, you know, I think the other very large. Is that the Belvedere Apartment Building?
Further north, yes.
Yeah, but, but, but that formerly was, I believe, some kind of dedicated staff housing. Part of a nursing school or something, okay. Yeah, okay. So. My concern here is that, you know, when we had Sandy. Our main medical center in Jersey City was in a flood zone. And there's a lot of concern in Jersey City in general about. The shortage of hospital space that's not in a flood zone. And I. My thought was that this medical district was supposed to be exactly what it said. It was supposed to be. And, and it was to kind of serve as, you know, primarily for medical services. Not as, you know, just regular housing development, so. Maybe, Mr. Height, you can kind of speak to my concerns that I have along those lines.
Yeah, yes, so again. There's, there's no shortage of medical-related uses in this neighborhood. This is not the last piece of property that's being converted from potentially medical to. To residential, I do have. The. Tax map. Up here, if I can share my screen. I think it's a good visual as to how much land is still readily available. Should Carepoint ever want to expand operations at this location, and I know that's been discussed over the years. So lots thirteen and nineteen are the main Carepoint hospitals to sell the locations. The property in question is this six thousand square foot, six thousand six hundred square foot property. All the other smaller properties along this section of Palisades, as you can see, are you, are you seeing the tax map?
Yes, yes, I am.
So, all the other properties are smaller and certainly smaller than sixty thousand square feet, so. Again, the threat of creating a precedent. I present before this board often, and. It's only because there are very few properties that are particularly suitable. You wouldn't be able to propose what we're doing on any one of these other lots because they are more narrow. Than what we typically look for as a sixty-foot wide lot, if that's where we establish a multifamily uses is a suitable lot size. So, again, I think this is telling because this lot thirteen is substantially underutilized. Half of it running this section, the eastern half, is a parking lot. I think Mr. Vandemark had the aerial up earlier, but. Should the hospital ever look to expand, this office, one-story office building would be the first to be envisioned for. For something more intense, and they could very well go up to ten stories. Which would be much more, in my opinion, much more intense than what we're proposing.
Very good, no, and I certainly agree that that lot and area is underutilized, but I'll be. Curious to see what city staff has to say about that. Sure, there must be some other members of the board that have questions.
I have, if I was understanding the neighborhood individual speaking, that you had presented to them. At some point, had you presented this to the Neighborhood Association?
We did.
Okay, so what amendments did you make to alleviate some of the concerns that they had? Or is this the same plan you bring before us? And you made no changes to it to help accommodate whatever the concerns were that the homeowners had?
We, in response to some of our comments about the unit count, we reduced the unit count. From, I think it was twenty-three, twenty-two or twenty-three, we reduced it to twenty percent. We also changed the affordable units, were all proposed to be moderate income units, and. We changed it from, changed it to two moderate income and one low income, so. The moderate income are up to eighty percent AMI and low income is up to fifty percent AMI, so we. That was one of the changes, and then, and then we changed, we indicated we moved the garage entrance away from, further north. Further away from the intersection to, to try to address their concerns about it being in, you know, closer proximity to, to the intersection, which. The existing driveway was. And we also looked into, you know, as Mr. Burton testified. We did an extensive study into whether or not a traffic light was warranted here. Or any other, you know, traffic mechanism, and looked into it independently and with Jersey City Engineering. To see if that was something that, that, you know, if it was warranted to, to propose that. We, Mr. Burton's conclusions were that it's not warranted, so it shouldn't be there. But those, those are the changes that we made, we reduced the unit count. Changed the mix of the affordable, added the low income. And, and we did shift the garage further north. And the interior, we shifted that so that you could go into the garage and do the K-turn, drop off patients, and then come out of the garage.
So as far as mechanical parking goes. A little, I need a little more detail on that, I'd like to a little bit know a little bit more about that, I mean. Are the owners of these units or the residents of these units expected to come back in and they're going to move the cars up and down and they're going to. Run that whole lift system? Themselves?
Anthony, do you want to address that?
So, the owners do not operate the system themselves. This system is called a lift and slide system, where there is a pit below the racking system. There is one empty space within the racking system. And when somebody approaches the garage door, they hit the clicker. The clicker engages the garage door and also the racking system, and an empty space will drop in front of a gate in one of these five parking spaces. The owner then parks his car. Gets out of his car, walks out of the tray, hits the key fob and the gate closes up, and the cars remain behind gates. We have a very similar system that has been in use for approximately fourteen years at six fifty Montgomery Street. It was a system that was one of the first in North America, and we are using now. Lift and slide systems in, in a lot of parts of Jersey City and also all over the state. It's kind of a solution to kind of these urban environments where there is parking shortage. So there is no operators, there is no second party here. The owner, you know, basically operates his car to the racking system, gets off, racking system closes up, and then, and then they leave. And there's a maintenance contract and the management company pays for that maintenance contract, and again. None of the tenants would occupy and or use the racking system, they don't operate it.
And on return to their car when they want to leave the parking area?
Yeah, same thing, what happens is that their car is key to one of the trays in the racking system. Again, via clicker or fob or app. They click, their car will queue, that's in one of the front five gates, gate will open up. The owner gets in their car, backs out, pulls out the garage door, again, they click and the gate gets closed. There's also a timer on the gate system, so after a certain amount of time, the gate system will close.
Some of the other comments centered around the four parking spaces that you have there for the medical office. And their concerns were, where is the staff going to park, where the patients park, where there are four spaces only? What happens when those spaces are full and people are trying to, so they have to go around the neighborhood to look, or some of the. Spaces in the back that are for the owners or tenants, are any of those spaces going to be used during the day for the medical office staff? To alleviate some of the over, because there'll be more than probably four patients at a time in the office.
Anthony, or do you want, or Calisto, do you want to touch upon that, or Anthony?
All right, this is Calisto, I'll, we. Thought about it, the parking spaces in the back is the mechanical system, and. While there may be a possibility to have some of the office staff use those for, you know, when residents leave in the morning. We didn't. We didn't want to say that going in because, you know, it might be a complicated system to install, maybe not, so. The four spaces in front would be meant for the visitors, remember, the medical only requires one parking space by the ordinance. And so we tried to put parking in because we wanted to be practical. So some of the medical staff would not park in this parking lot, they'd have to find parking in the area.
So we actually have more parking than what is required under the ordinance for the medical office, correct?
Yes. And, and, and I guess that's a two-edged sword, is because if we provide more parking, there's a perception that there's more traffic. And if we provide less parking, then where are they going to park? So we tried to come up with a balance, we're providing much more parking than what's required. To address that, and providing parking doesn't necessarily mean, you know, we're going to have more traffic. I'd just like to mention that, you know, when resident. Residential people have the opportunity to walk places, the office staff. Most likely isn't living right in the neighborhood, and they're driving here. So, medical office building would surely, if this were a complete medical office building, would surely generate more traffic, vehicular traffic. Than the residential building, but just, just for comparison, that's why I'm just saying that.
Right, but with all due respect, I'm sure that a lot of the patients will be driving there as well as the medical staff.
Absolutely, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, the medical staff will have, the medical use will have more traffic activity than the residential use. Because the office, the medical office has patients throughout the day. Generally, residences, they, they'll leave in the morning and come back in the evening, this is during the week, whether they drive or take a bus or some other mode of transportation.
Madam Chair. Question?
Yes.
Uh, yes, just, just, I'd like to understand, we had five accidents at this intersection. I guess over the last year, is this one of the worst intersections in Jersey City? By accident, measured by accidents or near misses?
I don't know that, we, again, we contacted engineering to inquire about this, we did get some accident studies, but we, we just got. Accidents on this area, I don't know the comparison with other intersections.
It seems like that is fairly high. As far as the intersection is concerned. It seems also that. If you had neighborhood meetings. The neighbors I saw tonight were. Strongly opposed to this particular. Building and this, this, this application. The other neighbor that's right next door says that you're cutting off his light. What's your solution to something like that and to also some of the things that the neighbor said tonight?
So, a couple of things, firstly, the neighbor next door, we're, we're not blocking up his, his windows, his windows are inset. In a window well, and then they're set back in the rear of the property, so this is not a situation where you have lot line windows that are being covered up. So that, you know, it's typical of any other development that would be built to the lot line, especially if you have the window wells, so he'll still have that. I mean, as far as the other issues, like we, you know, we're looking at this and we, as I mentioned earlier, we made changes, you know, in response to the comments and. You know, a lot of them, you know, I guess we agree to disagree, but we're. We look at this project as a more appropriate project and less, less of an impact. On, in this area, and on this property. And I know, well, you know, say, well, you could have a ten-story medical office building here. I think that, that would have a tremendous, more of an impact. On the intersection with more, more activity, patients going in and out. And where you have this, where there was mentioned about the R-one zone, you know, we're not in the R-one zone, but we're also not in a multifamily zone, but. I think that, that what that tells you is, the reference to the R-one is that you have a lot of residential. Uses in the immediate area. And that's why we thought, you know, with this five-story building, you do have a mix where you've got the medical office use, and then you have your residential use. Which complements the other uses along the area and along Palisade there, as you see. From Mr. Vandemark's presentation, you have, you know, smaller buildings to the, to the south. And that, that are not, you know, larger buildings, so we thought this is less impactful and more appropriate than, than. Then, you know, pursuing, you know, a, you know, a larger ten-story building, you know, whether it's medical office or offices permitted to. These are all other, other uses that have much more of a, I think, a negative impact on the area, especially at that location, so. We, you know, we listened, but we, we also believe that this, this is a good project for, an appropriate project for, for the property.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any further questions?
Madam Chair, does Steph have any comments?
Yeah, I, I actually have one more question. And then. And actually, I just want. The applicant to just respond to some of the comments about the genesis of the whole open garage issue. And why that was kind of viewed as kind of a. Better solution, and what concern exactly was that addressing? Because that really wasn't clear to me from the get-go.
Okay, that's my fault, so I'll, I'll address. Understanding that we're going to have patients drive to the site. You know, we could have an electric eye by the door to let them in. But then someone walking with a stroller or something like that could trip the electric eye and the door would open. Does someone call ahead of time and say, look, I'm just around the corner, would you open up the door? That means someone has to go ahead and do that when they drive. I just thought it was a much simpler thing to leave that garage door open. So people can drive in rather than having a closed drawer, if it were a parking lot, we wouldn't be talking about a garage. We could put a window on either side of the door if someone's worried about security, but we're just talking about this during the day, not at night. You know, during business hours when patients. patients would be coming in and out. There will be a second garage door further in to segregate the residential parking from the rest of the parking lot. No one's getting in there. The only way to get in there is if you're a resident, you have the clicker and you're going to open up the door. So that was the genesis of why we thought an open garage would be less cumbersome than having it closed. But if there's a strong belief that it should remain closed, you know, it can remain closed. We were just trying to be practical.
Okay. And then I I actually have one one more question. And I guess this is probably more of a planning Mr. Height type question, but anybody can jump in. Another piece that I'm just confused about is that in general, this is this is a mixed use, but it's primarily a residential use. But there's no heed given to setbacks. It's like a hundred percent lock coverage. And so, you know, this is a little bit of a square peg in a round hole si- situation, but I really need to have a better understanding of why there was even no consideration of having any setbacks. I don't think the answer of, well, it it already had a hundred percent coverage because it was a lot in a building. That doesn't really change this for me because you're actually asking for a very substantive variance.
Charles, before you enter, I I just want to make one comment. And and this has happened on other projects where we've used mechanical parking. They could have left the mechanical parking exposed and just had a small parking lot. But when you put mechanical parking, you really don't want that exposed to the elements because for all the all the reasons you can think of. So the idea was to put a roof over top of the mechanical parking. If we don't want the mechanical parking and we want to have five or maybe 10 parking spaces in there, we could remove the roof, have a parking lot, and then have the setback. That's just, that's just a function of trying to get more parking into the proper. But I'll I'll turn it over to Charles now.
Okay. No, and that that was actually helpful.
Okay. And 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 it 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 really ties into, there's two components here, just only the building coverage and lock coverage. So from a lock coverage standpoint, I think that's where we were referencing the existing conditions today being one hundred percent. So in terms of stormwater runoff, we are improving conditions by introducing the stormwater management system. We are not sacrificing on open space for future tenants. We have the terraces above the that first four parking deck. In terms of building, I think that's where that's where we were referencing the the design is to comply with the eighty percent coverage. And the reason why we're focusing on that is because the M district doesn't have any other setback requirements. For just to to review the 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 bulk requirements, a maximum height is ten ten stories, one hundred feet. The building and lock coverage of both permitted a maximum eighty percent. For garage parking, four stories, that's not applicable. If we were adjacent to a residential user zone, there'd have to be a buffer of 10 feet. So again, we have a mixed use structure and then office structure. So there's no, that's not, that's not applicable as as well. And then the last, the fifth bulk requirement is parking standard, one space for 5,000 square feet. So that's where we're really honing in on the eighty percent coverage. Any future development would likely be proposing the same footprint on stories two through four, because that would be what we call as of right or permitted under the zoning in this district. For reference, the the R two D, that is a more intense further north on Palisades permits up to ninety five percent coverage. They they permit multifamily and the intent there is to try and enclose the parking. Have that the the parking activity reduced in terms of noise and lights and things like that on adjacent uses, but again, don't have that interior lot of rear yard. It's 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 a very irregular situation where we have predominantly the parking lot adjacent to us in the rear area. So I I I hope that answers your question as to why we're focusing on the eighty percent. It's really because there's there's no other requirements for setbacks. And and any future building would not be held or start to implement setback requirements on their own. It it likely wouldn't wouldn't occur.
Very good. I have one other question. You did, I think I understood this, that when the medical office closes, shuts down for the evening, the gates are locked, right? The, but yet you said that the residents could use, have access to those four spaces. How will they have access to the four spaces? And I mean, I guess this is not your problem once people move in, but to ensure the fact that those cars are removed in the morning for the medical people to come in and the patients to come in.
This is Kalisto responding. We do this a lot, a concept called shared parking. In 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 other cities where we, it's it's part of the ordinance. We we sign them and say, look, you have to be, th- these are the hours you can use the parking. And that's how you can reduce the amount of parking by having shared parking. For example, Hackensack has it in their ordinance. And it's it's a formula. We just use it on all the buildings. So we have the four parking spaces. They're not going to be used at night, so let's use them. So let's, so because you know, you're gonna, you you'll have occasions where you have visitors. We would not want it for overnight parking for that reason, because you know, the who's ever in that spot's got to get out of there by, say, seven o'clock in the morning. And there's management to enforce these things. There's also tow trucks, so it doesn't happen again.
How do they gain access?
No, 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 but the 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 residents, their clicker will operate both doors. Right? Because the residents have to get in. That's the only way in. So they get in, they get through. They they'll keep on going to the back to where they park. But in the evening, visitors coming over, okay, yeah, there's space downstairs. I'm going to open the door for you. So your your friend.
It's always the same. Okay. So I didn't understand it. That's what I was asking. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the board have any further questions before we go to staff for comments?
All right. And just because we've seen a few hands go up and in the public again, we did close the public comments. And now we'll proceed with with staff review.
Hello, Commissioners. Lindsay Sigmund actually was the planner who reviewed this, but she had to leave. And so she did ask me to review it and take it over. I've reviewed her report. I've reviewed all of the application, familiar with it for my peripheral extent with it that I've had during the whole application time. I'm actually really familiar with the site. My old GI doctor, Dr. Siegel, used to be right here. So I, what I'll comment on is that her staff report reiterates a lot of things that Mr. Height said, so I won't go through those things for you. I will say that as a part of the master plan visioning, what we really have been, I think, refocusing on, are they singular use zones? Not saying that everything needs to be permitted everywhere, but we get into these issues where we're backed into uses like medical or even like university, when in a lot of instances, these are more appropriate as overlay districts. And that really was the intention when we were looking at the master plan at rezoning this area. If you look at this site of Palisade Avenue, the east side, you notice that it mimics a lot of the west side, which are either these frame buildings or these brick buildings that do have some component of residential, but also maybe ground floor medical, maybe the practitioner lived previously, or they were operating as all practitioners. But not large medical campuses, like maybe Christ Hospital and maybe once assumed would have been there. So in our conversations with Sergeant Anthony and the other residents of the lower heights, we talked about bringing down the R two D zone, which is up on the northern part of Kennedy, of Palisade Avenue. Some of the things that I want to highlight about the commonalities, and I don't really want to go too much on it, because I know that this board in the past has said, well, it's not zone that, so don't give me those, don't give me those comparisons. So I, but I will say that this mimics most of the R two D zoning with the exception of the density. So the density permitted for the R two D zoning is seventy five units an acre. And the project, the proposal project actually mimics what you would see if this was an inclusionary zoning application. So even though, no, this is not triggered and it's not regulated by the inclusionary zoning application, you're looking at a project that went from seventy five units an acre to a hundred and thirteen or fifteen, somebody please, I I couldn't find it in the report. Unit an acre with a fifteen percent set aside for two moderate and one low, which might be there's something very similar to what would be required with the IZO, but I won't even go on and say on the record, I think the IZO requirements might be a little bit more stringent as to bedroom types. But that being said, the comments that Lindsay did put into her report on the record, I just want to make sure that they're read into the record. I I I do want to kind of say as an aside, as I'm listening to the comments and listening to the residents' comments and the commissioners' comments, a little upset that I'm reading a traffic study that does not at all take in our ordinance. If I had, if I was reading a traffic study that replicated our ordinance, we'd be talking about Vision Zero, Safe Streets, the bike study, pedestrian safety. So I'm a little upset that, you know, if we're an ordinance that we've had for two years, I'm looking at a study that doesn't address that at all, when it could have been really helpful for this conversation. So let me just read in the conditions of approval that Lindsay has on these in her staff comments. So in the event the application is approved, staff recommends the following conditions. One is our, the first two are very common, actually, first three, right? No change in site design permitted without consultation approval by planning staff with the idea that you can also be required to go for site amendment. All testimony given tonight is in the, within accordance with the application is binding. Street trees landscaping should be installed in accordance with the forestry standards. And they have to all be installed prior to issuance of CO. And number four, which is specific to this application, the applicant needs to enter into an affordable housing agreement, the Division of Affordable Housing. And the documentation of that agreement submitted to the Division of City Planning prior to issuance of CO. Number five, all comments from Jersey City Engineering and Jersey City MUA shall be addressed and shown on final signature plans. And six, which is a pretty common, which is that we ask for the amended D to be filed with the Hudson County Sheriff's Office and proof of such filing to be submitted to us prior to issuance of construction permits.
I, can I jump in? In I I hope you don't want to shoot me here, but I, you know, we've had some go back and forth here with my client. And he he would like to table this before a vote is taken. Just so we can, there's a lot of questions that were asked by, you know, and and raised by the comments and questions raised by the community and in this board. And I think we need some time to look at them a little closer and get your answers and consider some of these these comments. You know, as to parking, as to density or as to the medical uses, we so we respectfully ask that we table this so that we have time to look at that. We would not expect to come back, you know, in two weeks, we would, you know, have to, you know, sharpen our pencil and and take a look before and then come back to the board with with the, you know, revisions.
Let's check with council. Vinny, do you have any recommendations or thoughts on this? And also open to other members of the board, what they're, what they think of Mr. Harrington's proposal?
I guess in light of what Tanya said as well, with your traffic study, perhaps that has to be a little bit sharpened. And perhaps I imagine it's not a bad idea to.
Yeah, I I I would, I would tend to agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
So 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 is that, so procedurally, if we were to to do that, Benny, how how would we go about that?
Well, that's what I was just thinking. I imagine we'd have to table this to some sort of date certain. I guess whatever date that would be, Tanya, give him thirty days or perhaps more, but that would also mean that.
But I, but but you'd also expect kind of a different looking application at that point.
Well, if we have a different looking application, then maybe the whole thing has to be started from scratch, no? I'm just thinking Chuck, as as he said, is sharpening a pencil. I don't, I don't think he means sharpening a pencil. Reducing it from five stories to two. I don't think he means that. I think he means filling in some of these blanks about the traffic study. Things of that sort. If it's going to be a new application and it's going to be a new hearing altogether. But I think what he's trying to say is that he's going to present some testimony that's going to amplify what went on today. Which also means that if we carry it to a date certain, the public, again, has a right to speak on it.
Understood.
So we're going to give, so to speak, like an addendum. There is such.
And I I think we would need, you know, at least there's there's, I'm looking either May twenty sixth or June ninth for a date. I know that the board's, you know, agendas are pretty packed, but we would need, like I said, it's not May twelve. So I I would defer to the board on on what they think would be an appropriate date to carry this to.
You have a feeling on that, Tanya?
Um, you know, Francisco, if you're there, you might have a little better of idea of how backed up the zoning board is. I I apologize. I have not been keeping up on.
That's where Francisco is.
This board, this board is actually doing a lot better than the planning board as far as backlog goes, which is a a nice change of pace for this board.
Yeah, I know we do have two appeals. And one of them will be May twelve. So I don't, is it June?
Yes. What's the first date in June? First, I guess I can look at my calendar.
June ninth.
June ninth?
Yes, that, no, actually. Let me double check quickly.
Well, I could tell you. Hold on a second. June ninth is a zoning board meeting and so is June twenty third.
Yes, that's correct.
Chuck?
Ju- June ninth, I think, if we can carry to that day.
Sounds good then.
Again, it's
And just.
It's for the limited purpose of you, so to speak, sharpening your pencil on some gaps that may be in this presentation, but that are also open to the public again. So we're given notice to the public that it's now on, it's going to be carried to June ninth. So we just said the ninth, right? Correct.
Right. And if there's, you know, I I would, you know, if there's substantial, not substantial, but there are changes to it, I, you know, I'll send a copy of the plans out to Sergeant Anthony Association. And, you know, maybe I'll I'll notice again, just so everybody has it.
Yeah, depending on what you're doing, you might have to.
Right.
Let's assume for the moment that you don't have to, but this is notice to the public now that it's on for June ninth. It's carried to June ninth. Okay, well.
Okay, so I'm, I just want to just double check with the with the 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 rest of the the board to see if anybody has a different opinion on this. I know in 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 the past, I have been resistant to this sort of request, but I think it's, in my view, I think it probably is the best thing in in the long run, even though it's kind of frustrating after a long night.
I have a question. So right now, would we table it because of a traffic study?
That's one of the issues, yes.
Okay.
But but there are a number of issues that have been brought up by the public and in questioning that they need to supplement their presentation to address in.
That they need to supplement their presentation to address in kind of a more thorough manner. Um.
I also live in the Heights.
Yeah.
I I live in Jersey City Heights and I take palisades out of you all the time. And I drop my daughter off in County Prep, pick her up, and I'm all those around. And. The project sounds beautiful and everything, but I have no problem waiting to June or the end of May, whenever you guys are ready.
Yeah, yeah, I have no problem either. I don't mind. I'll table it.
Okay, any other thoughts? All right.
Let's go.
All right, so um, well, we will ta- table this and for now, it will be. Scheduled for uh June ninth. Um, and Mr. Harrington, you'll coordinate with with Vinny to see if there's. Um. You know, if there's any noticing that's required or or anything like that, but for members of of the public. Um, June ninth, mark your calendar now. Um. Uh, for uh, you know, the refined presentation.
And just to be clear, this is carried to June nine, the regular meeting with or without preservation of notice?
No, it's with the preservation of notice.
Okay.
We're just supplementing the record.
Okay, thank you.
So we're good with that.
Okay.
And and so we're good with this particular matter, right? We could close.
Yes.
This matter is concerned. But while we're talking about uh. Uh, preservation of notices, we we should actually announce that uh case Z twenty-one dash zero one nine. Um. That's the J S Q Group LLC, two eleven Summit Avenue. I guess we're carrying that case with a preservation of notices and where would we carry that case to, Francesco?
That will also go, uh, it will be carried to the May twelfth.
May twelfth.
Yeah, the regular scheduled meeting.
And similarly, case Z twenty-one dash zero seven five.
That's correct.
Tingly Kang and Sung Zhang, ninety-nine Thorn Street. We'll pres- carry that with a preservation of notices to May twelfth as well. All righty. Well, I guess that concludes the calendar, right? So we just have to just memorialize three resolutions. Is that good?
Should, yes.
Okay, so the first uh resolution is Z twenty-one dash zero five one. The one eighty-three Princeton Avenue LLC. The address of that application uh be enough is one eighty-three Princeton Avenue. That was decided on February twenty-fourth. And it was an application for a D and C variance. That was approved, seven in favor and none opposed, present that evening with Chairman Jacobs. Commissioners Don Lee, Shadid, Arroyo, Patel, Green, and Mani. So all in favor of memorializing that?
Hi.
Hi.
And the next two resolutions to memorialize were heard on March twenty-fourth. Present on March twenty-fourth were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Don Lee, Shadid, Arroyo, Patel, Green. And Coil. And that, uh, both of these applications passed, seven in favor, none opposed. And. The first is uh Z twenty-two dash zero one four. The applicant was Delaware Park Properties LLC. The address is one ninety-three Myrtle Avenue, and that was an application for a C variance. And as I said, that passed seven in favor and none opposed. All in favor of uh memorializing that is I.
Hi.
And the next is uh. Z twenty-one dash zero nine four, again, uh, heard on March twenty-fourth. Same seven commissioners. Uh, the applicant was one fifteen dash one seventeen Brun- Brunswick Realty LLC. Minus site plan approval with C and D variances for a property at one fifteen Brunswick Street. That passed seven in favor and none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that is.
Hi.
Hi.
So that concludes the resolutions. I'm assuming that concludes the business for this evening. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So.
I hope so.
Shall we make a motion to adjourn? Okay, so we can stop the reporting?
Yes.